All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Carlisle Select Board on Thursday, February 16th. And the agenda is really, the first part of it is a continuation of the discussion that we had on Tuesday around the budget. First, we'll have community input if there's anyone that would like to give some, and then we'll continue our discussion about the budget. And then we will conclude by talking with Aubrey, our human resources administrator, about the bylaw change that will be on the town meeting warrant. Is there anyone here or online that would like to offer community input at this time? All right, well, seeing none, I'm going to move on then to the budget discussion. Of course, it's a little hard to have this without David here. But let's begin. So here's my suggestion about how we try to move through this tonight, that we we start first with the operating budget and see if we can reach a conclusion around the expenses that are outside, excuse me, the guidance budget. And if you refer back to the sheet we had for our meeting on Tuesday, it's the one that starts off with revenue notes, I think is the heading, yeah. You can see the, well, actually, there's an expense reduction section at the top, but then below that is what was being referred to as the deficit analysis. And that outlines the six items that were outside the guidance budget. And we had a fair amount of discussion about the sustainability position. We didn't really talk at length about the others. So my hope would be we can determine where we stand on those additional items. And as part of that, obviously, people are going to want to discuss where would the funds come from? Or what expenses would we reduce in order to be able to accommodate that in our operating budget and staying within our guidance framework? And one of the things that we talked a little bit about on Tuesday, but I would just like to reiterate is because it's something that the board, we've talked about generally as a board, which is that we, one of our goals was to try to keep the impact on taxes as low as possible. And David and Ryan and I, Ryan and I met yesterday to just do some planning around tonight, but also future meetings and felt that if you look down at the bottom of the levy analysis, which shows the average tax bill and then annual increases, that if we could, and again, I know it's imperfect because it's an average, but if we could keep us under 500 for the increase, that that would be desirable, given both the year we're in, what's happened with some tax assessments in town, what's happening with inflation, that that would be a desirable target. Again, I'm speaking for myself on that one, but I think it might be useful for us as a board to see if we're in agreement in general about trying to keep that tax bill low. And then we can come back up to the discussion about the expenses and the additional requests. Yes, please.
You talked about $500. You're talking about the annual increase, which is $518.
Correct.
Tax bill for the town.
Yeah, yep, based on the FY '24 budget that is, does not have those additional items in it that are referenced above. Yeah, thanks Travis.
That there's going to be somebody at 250 additional and somebody at 100. Nobody is going to.
Nobody's out.
Right, right.
That's why it's the percentage that matters, not.
Right, but I.
Yes, but that average is generated by a percentage. So I think it would be better to talk about percentage because.
Yeah, we certainly can do that. I just know that, you know, from the standpoint of the public and what gets published in the mosquito, that dollar amount is also going to get talked about.
It will, but that's a fact. Precisely what I'd rather.
The percentage be.
Percentage, because when you get your bill and you say, wait, mine's 750 more, and they said it was going to be that I feel that that would generate more problems than help.
So what would that percentage be then? Did you do the.
Math right, 3.15?
3.1?
It was 3.22.
Okay, so if we're comfortable with that general notion.
Unless you want it to be below three or something.
Say three, just say.
Oh, okay, it's up there for us to look at. That's helpful. Thanks.
You could run the math right now, real time, and get us to see what three would be.
Because you've got 3.15 there.
Well, I mean, just.
Yeah.
That's what 518 is.
Right, right, it's up there on the, yeah.
But if you go, you know.
492 is 3.09.
That's from the previous.
1.02, 1.03.
Which is what it was. Oh, oh, that's from 23, right? So if we tried to make this here.
You'd have to cut 40 more dollars.
Reasonable.
Right, in today's inflation, yes.
Right. All right, everybody.
That's an all-in increase, right?
That's all in.
That's all in, because this doesn't count all the other things.
Correct.
No, no, well, we're going to get there, but.
Right, this is just the current.
We put in layer on other taxes. Anything else we add is.
Either have to find more revenue or cut other expenses. Yes, yeah, yeah, sorry, other, right, a different source.
You say no, or you pay for it some other. But we're starting with consensus opinion.
Yeah.
What our ceiling is for the increase.
Are we good on that?
So are we staying 500 or 518 or?
We're going to go with the percent.
3%. 3.1 or 3 point, whatever you want to say. What is 5?
We could say 3% just.
3%?
16408 is 3%. Again, it's still an average, right?
Right, okay, yep, so 16, yep, so that's 3%. Okay. Okay, if we're good with that, we're going with 3%, then let's move back up to the previous page that talks about the revenue, that the heading is revenue notes. Ryan, do you have that one you can put up?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, so why don't you walk us just through briefly the expenses? I know there's been, these are, these are the items that Ryan is suggesting can be reduced, this is the amount of a reduction in these expenses. And you want to just quickly walk us through that again?
Sure, so if you're reducing expenses, there's two things to worry about. One, you wouldn't have enough to cover a specific cost, which would mean you need to cover it either from a reserve fund or another transfer. And the second thing is non-expended accounts turn into free cash. So the more you constrict your operating budget or tighten it up, the less free cash you'll generate, just something to note. So the, I know you know that, I'm talking more to the public, so the the first line from the town administrator's budget, the Ripley capital was included in this year's budget to cover the costs while something bigger was figured out. There is no cost for the Ripley building, so this can be reconsidered in the capital budget, so this can be removed without any budget impact. For the small capital line, we increased this to 25,000 to match what we had done with MFC funds for small for small maintenance projects in town buildings. This could be consolidated from other departments. The library, the police, and town hall all have maintenance budgets. We could condense those down and cover that $25,000 cost that way. So it's a $25,000 relief off the FY '24 budget. The regional school reduced their assessment after we had published this initial draft of the budget, so that's a known decrease of 16,000. The blanket in workers' comp insurance, you'd be assuming a little bit of risk here with costs. We know that the costs are going to increase about 7% based off of calculations that we've done. We also had to increase this budget because we've done transfers on it for the last couple of years. We believe it'll come in at around 380,000. Right now, we have, with this $10,000 cut, it would be around 390. So we still have a little bit of cushion. So you can assume pretty reasonably some risk there.
That's an increase in the insurance, the 380 to 390 or whatever?
Yes, blanket insurance.
Blanket insurance. So that's like a very miniscule percent, isn't it? Of increase in insurance. I don't know, I'm just asking because I think that insurance continues to go up.
Yeah, about 8% per year.
So that factors in that 8%?
Yes.
Plus a little bit.
Because we assumed it was 10% increase, so we can back it down. And then the reserve fund, so if you hold a 12% reserve with your free cash and stabilization, which is the target of this board and the FinCom, then your in-year reserve fund does not have to be as great. So although we put it at 200,000, 150,000 would be fine, assuming some risk there. So you do have reserves and others to cover, you know, any unknown costs. We've never had to really spend that account fully or not had another way to transfer money, even in a bad snow and ice year. So it's okay to assume some risk here. It's not best practice, but it can adjust down to cover other costs. And then one more we've identified, so I'm going to show you the exact line item because you haven't seen it yet.
That's the red line.
Where did it go?
I know, yes, it is, because even we can see it.
Then I put up the smallest lines you can see even on a giant screen. So the vocational schools, what's included in this is mandatory costs we pay to Minuteman and the Shoba, and then the transportation costs that are included there. Transportation costs are pretty known at around, and I would not decrease this budget, of 45,000. We have, assuming a similar increase, it's a $15 per day increase at 180 days, puts us under, just under 45,000 for that transportation cost next year. We have two students who require that. You talk to the company and feel pretty confident in that number. The other one is for two students, two and then maybe three who attend our vocational schools. One of them is graduating. So this will be a reduction in costs. So we believe we can bring that number down to 100,000 and still have the ability to cover a student who went there. We would not be able to cover two. But we don't think, given the enrollment possibilities right now, that that's even conceivable. So this is overbudgeted and can come down to accommodate other needs, but about $30,000 gain to this budget.
So the $126,000 figure under expenses, you're raising it by another 30,000?
No.
To 156?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Do it in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, okay.
Where's the sensor?
Behind the door. That's the problem with moving the door.
There's always something.
Are you going to put that up on the screen again?
Oh, yeah, I thought I did. I can see it perfectly.
It is.
All right, so that's that red line you see there.
Yeah.
I've confirmed this with both regional schools. Kim, our finance team, we're pretty confident saying that this number can go down 30,000.
The same deal, I can't see the number.
30,000, I'm writing it in mind.
So we can reduce the draft one budget by 156,000 we're recommending to you without any real impact to service.
So any questions about this portion? Okay.
This is just, this is budget, yeah.
We're pretty certain that there isn't a student that's going to want to go VOTech.
We do think there are students that want to go. We don't think they'll get in.
Yeah, we understand.
Remember, there's that problem now. Sorry. Go ahead, Ryan, you want to explain?
The demand on the vocational school is so great that the vocational school does not believe that there's a waitlist for people who are members, and we're not even a member. So you'd have to go through the entire member waitlist to get to one of our students. So unless it was a student who the state deemed had to go there, which is unlikely, is really, we really think there's no chance next year. I do know that the school committee has mentioned it to you, to the FinCom and to me, that they'd like to have this conversation about getting our students there, but it will not happen in FY '24.
Okay, that's pretty low risk.
They said extremely low risk.
Okay, so if we're all comfortable, then let's move on to the next portion, which is looking at the items that are proposed that are outside that guidance budget. The health insurance recommendation, so what we need to just be mindful of, I know we've all talked about this, but not in great detail, is that this is a 1% increase in the share the town would pay of health insurance. And the notion would be that we would be signaling that we are planning to continue to increase the town share at least over the next five years by 1%, and potentially, it could be 10 years, but I think in our minds, we should be thinking if we want to go ahead with this, we're starting a path of moving in that direction that'll obviously affect future years.
Intactually, Ryan, you're saying that most towns contribute between 60 and 65%.
I believe that's the median.
We're at 55, so this would be 56, 57, 58, and then 60. And then we would take another look and decide if we want to keep going. But, you know, I mentioned it in a meeting a few weeks ago. It is sort of a social, in my opinion, it's sort of a social contract. I mean, if we embark on this, we shouldn't stop at like 56 or 7%. Signal to the employees that this is our path. So that means it's 15%. In today year dollars, it's 15% per percent, so 15,000 per percent. So today is 15,000, next year that becomes base, and another 15,000, blah, blah, blah. So you're at 75. In some future year, you're, in today dollars, you're at 75,000 extra cost.
This is data, not persuasion, but in a conversation with an employee today, the contribution cost next year is projected to go up 7%. So it's a sizable chunk of any employee compensation.
Their employee share is likely to go up 7%?
The whole package, but what their.
It would go down a little.
Because we'd pick up one, but nevertheless, there's going to be an increase, yeah.
And we just lost another employee who's going to get.
More compensation.
More compensation and better benefits.
Yeah, yeah. Any discussion about this? Are we all comfortable with this being? And I'm setting aside the, how does this get paid for, right? But are we in principle, do we support it?
Assuming we can.
Right. Everybody good?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then the COLA at 3%. That's pretty straightforward.
Do you have any background, more, I mean, I think 3% is a perfectly reasonable number, but I'm just wondering if we have any other background to support it.
Ryan sent out a.
Ryan sent a sheet.
Did you see that? Yeah, showing.
When did you, was that today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Where did that go?
I think it was yesterday.
I will call it up. I got it right here.
Okay.
I will caveat that this is not an agreed upon market basket of towns, it's just a snapshot.
You mean not necessarily comparable towns, in the sense of demographics or size or?
Future conversation of something we should pick.
Yeah, got it.
The, these are towns in what we call Small Town Administrator Association, so towns that are close in size to us, very, you know, very varying demographics and income levels. I took some averages down here in the bottom, just to show, I didn't pull a 3% recommendation out of thin air. It seems to be about the average. What's not included here is some considerations like in Dalton. Dalton's at a 1.7, but they have a 2% step increase each year, so it's really a 3.75. We are proposing to you a compensation plan that has a 1%, so you're really doing 4%. So just trying to show you real dollars, it's still pretty comparable.
Northfield and Worthington make us look pretty pathetic, huh? 6%?
Northfield. Well, but, you know, we don't know what the overall compensation packages are either, but the thing is, 3% is certainly not, the reason I wanted this up is
Not.
Public, is not out in left field.
Right.
Certainly, we all are aware that there is quite a bit of inflation going on right now. Gas prices are going down, but housing is going up.
If you look at the 30 to $40 million budget range, which is where we land, pretty consistent, could you just, you know, don't save it, but just take up the high and the low?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
6%, he wants the outlier.
Yeah.
1.75.
Yeah, he did it already.
Delete, delete it and delete.
Yeah, yeah.
Delete Worthington, you still have it, just wanted it.
It goes down.
Still a point, yeah.
0.83. Went down a little.
Those sixes, just throw it way off.
Yeah.
Well, there's.
Right, but I mean, if we step back holistically, you know, inflation has not calmed down that much, right? So. Thank you. What's fair, right? I mean, that's like kind of a question.
I think 3% is fair. The teachers are going to get, was it 2.2 and a half?
Yeah, it's either that or 2.75. I can't remember which, is it 2.5?
No, they never got 2.2. I think it was 2.5 this year. But they, the ones that are on steps, 4% steps.
Right.
So I think 3% for the rest of the town is.
And particularly if you couple it with the wage, the change in the wage and grade.
Yes, but still not the same, but still not 2.5 plus 4, which is 6.5.
Correct.
Correct, so I think we.
It's still lower than what the school.
Yes.
Teachers get, yeah. Are people comfortable with the COLA there for now, and we can discuss the wage proposal? Okay, so this is at 79,000. Do you want to just give us a quick summary, Ryan, of the things that would be changing?
Yes, so there's two things to consider here. One is, we've talked about this in executive session, so I'll talk about it generally. The changing the wage plan structure from a 30-year structure to a 15-year structure with one step increase each year tied to evaluations. So this would be 1% for every employee that meets expectations. They would move up step, a 1% increase in total compensation. The idea behind the 79,000 is to tie it to the HRS study and other parity considerations in town and move everybody onto the plan, so nobody would go down. Some people who are paid the way HRS in their study said they should be, would have very, very small increases to get on the scale. And then those that need a little parity adjustment would move greater on the scale. This primarily targets mid-level female employees based on the study.
Everybody understand the basic concepts? Yeah.
Definitely. I'd like to, if I could just ask how all of these components fit in, like, so Kate was just saying at the school, they get, you know, they get the step and then they get the increase. Here, how often do they get a step? Or how often would they get this 1% step?
So what I'm proposing would be every year step, so every year they would get a step on July 1st. The current is a three-year step, so 30-year scale with 10 steps, so they get one step every three years, which does confuse our applicants when they're coming here. Sure, we could do a better job explaining it to them, but they believe, because a lot of towns do regular step increases, they're usually pretty upset to find out it's three-year. The difference between steps in this scale that we have now is 1.78%. So every three years.
Now, they have 1.78 every three years, and with this, it's 1% every year.
Yes. So the rationale behind this, from my opinion, is I do not believe we'll see many 30-year employees anymore. So there aren't many 30-year scales. I think a five-year commitment from an employee in at least the next decade's market for municipal employees makes more sense. So in terms of retention, targeting that group that would be here for five to 10 years would be a cost savings compared to having to replace them with employees that stay here longer than 15, and we'll keep people for sure. But I don't see it trending that way statewide or countrywide, really, if you want to get into ICMA studies.
So in effect, what this does is, not just this, but the package, is that other than those people who are coming up on their three-year, this is 1% more for its health insurance and a four-year annual increase. I mean, a 4% annual increase.
The COLA plus the 1%.
Package.
Yeah.
Yes.
For FY '24, yes.
Yeah.
And health insurance affects some, the wage adjustment affects some, the COLA affects everybody, so there's very.
In this case, I mean, now it would affect everybody because every year, I mean, as long as somebody's been here a year, they would get the 1% based upon.
So I should actually take that back. So the wage adjustments puts everyone on the scale, and then the COLA is applied to the scale, so they would get that, but the 1% step wouldn't kick in until FY '25.
Right, because they have to go through the year and be evaluated and, yeah.
So.
But nobody's going to go down.
Why is it in this year's budget?
I'm sorry?
Why is it in this year's budget?
The scale?
Yeah, that.
The 1%.
So the 80,000 is to move everyone onto the scale, and then we would use the scale for a year, and then they would get a 1% step.
So this figure does not include the 1% step?
Some people will get more than 1% because they're going to be.
Right.
On average, I'm not against this, I just want to make sure that I understand.
Please.
On average, then, that 80,000 is what percentage of somebody's salary that they would be getting this year?
It's a really, it's a really wide range.
Okay.
And we did, it was a lot of numbers in a tiny spreadsheet. We did go over it, so it ranges from, you know, $25,000, $25 to several thousand dollars, depending on the position.
Okay.
I have one more question then. If there were a bracket that got no adjustment, why shouldn't we give them the 1% along with the COLA this year? If they don't get, you know.
They don't get any increase from the change.
Increase from the structural.
Cost.
And they're getting the COLA.
They'll get the COLA, but they don't get the step and then have to wait an extra, and then some.
Again, remember, nobody's getting a step.
So it's not the most.
I understand nobody's getting a step, but some people are.
Getting a wage increase.
A wage increase.
Won't be the most popular, it won't be the most popular in terms of morale, but if you're not being heavily adjusted on the scale, it's because market indicates that you were hired correctly.
Yeah, I understand that too. I guess what I'd like to know is how much would it cost for we to do that? Because if it's $3,000, it may not be worth risking the morale. If it's $30,000, you know, we have something to talk about. That's, I guess that's the question I'm asking.
I would ask, Ryan, though, because he's kind of in charge of the personnel here, you know, how do you think that that would affect, like, can you think this makes sense and you manage that wage analysis? Like, you keep proposing it as a potential challenge, how do you see, I'm asking the same thing. I'm asking the same thing. Do you think that that's an issue, or would you be in favor as the town administrator?
I think this is what we can afford and will pass.
Let's see, objective? The objective is fairness?
Is parity, a clear and understandable wage scale that we can recruit and explain, and then.
An increase in how quickly you get.
Then to meet the select board's goal of tying compensation to evaluation, it's also a key component here. And then because there's a 1% step each. And then, because there's a one percent step each year, then your COLA decision comes much cleaner. And the fifth more technical reason for this is we can calculate, if you ask us what is the impact of COLA? If we make all these changes, we could, we could give it to you in ten minutes, right now, it took us a couple of weeks to figure it out.
I have a related question, so in the event that an employee is due for their three-year. Increase sometime in FY twenty four, how would they be, what would happen to them?
That's built into the budget recommendation that you have, it's only, I believe, a quarter of the employees is already in the budget. This move.
Their increase, FY twenty four, based on their three-year, okay, right.
The one thing that will will cause some some employee consternation is. Some of the moves to get people on the scale, because of the difference in in salary costs would move them from, say, a step six in our current scale to a step one. But they'd be moving upgrades, or the the difference in the grades is so different that. It was just, it's more of a perception that I'm now a step one again, but it's really moving them onto step one of the new scale, which is. Our best attempt at parity. Given all the different hirings that have been done over the last ten years or so. So there are, there are people that are paid higher than they should be, based off market. Not going to say their names or anything, but we, we're not going to move them down, right, so that. Getting closer to parity means, you know, we can't, we can't do this, which is what we should do, we're doing kind of this.
The nice thing about going down to the first step again is starting over, so they're not going to cap out, right?
That's actually the good thing.
Also, we'd hire everyone on the new scale without without deviation, so. If you were going to be hired above step one, you would be tied to step six, so it would eventually, through attrition, create more parity. As anybody who is, I don't, I hate using the term overpaid, but anyone who is outside of. Market, when that position opens, we would hire it at market.
So if we adopt this and we go forward. Okay, so we. Fast forward a year, we adopted this. Cola aside. I got a little confused about when the one percent kicks in, what will that line twenty two look like? Today's payroll, same payroll, but we've already made this seventy nine thousand dollar adjustments, and people. What does that look like next year?
A one percent?
Yeah, just one per one percent of payroll, or is it's, there's no more adjustments, right, it's just.
It's not quite one percent of payroll because of unions, so on the non-union side. Just just napkin math, thirty thousand.
Okay, so it's. It's, so basically, now it becomes like a four percent COLA. COLA plus one percent.
Correct, so all of your contract employees like myself, this doesn't apply to all of your unions, this doesn't apply to. This step is for your non-unions, who are, who are typically the ones who get their pay last. Depending on how they were hired is what creates a lack of parity.
I see, so that was just trying to do some math, and I think I was wrong, because if I'm looking at the COLA three percent. That total, that includes the 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 contract people, because they're getting that same COLA, right, or does it not? So I can't just take that number and divide it by three and say every percent, so therefore, I was just trying to say, well, next year, you know. Next year, obviously, that everything would be higher, I was thinking next year it would be about fifty seven thousand dollars for that one percent, but that's not true. It would be less, right, because of the contract people.
And you also have some floors, so the police, for example, have a two point two five floor, so even if you did a zero percent COLA, you still contractually have to pay. And that's a big chunk of our employees.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out that one. It was per year.
That's why when people say, can you calculate the COLA, it's just, it's a little confusing, so the. It's almost ninety thousand at one percent, because you have to pay two point two five to certain people, and then there's economies of scale as you go up. So once you hit two point two five, then you're at a true true ring, and then you get to three, everybody goes up point seven five. They just lose everybody.
One, that one percent. Increase for the non-union people, it seems like it's somewhere a little bit south of fifty thousand that will cost us next year.
Yeah. It's definitely less than fifty, it's probably closer to thirty.
I'm just thinking about the time we have here, so if we're comfortable with this proposal. Or if we, if we're not, or let me take a sense of the group. Travis, do you have?
I I have a couple more questions on it, but just to understand it, but if we need to move on, that's, that's.
I think you need to ask.
Ask your question.
Okay, so I'm I'm working off your hand gestures of raising everybody up to. And and I understand it comes from our wage analysis that we did, that some people are underpaid, and so we're trying to. And and one of the things that you said is, you spent three weeks trying to put these numbers together, and by doing this. It's going to make it much more efficient, so you think that there'll be significant cost savings if we were to do this just in administrative time going forward? So we'll see some benefit from this?
Yeah, tough to calculate, but Kelly spends a lot of time trying to apply COLA. And also doing other things like payroll, which is the reason for the HR software, so those are two. Technology, like this, this clarity and the technology will decrease. The need for, say, an extra finance clerk in order to to cover for when this math is being done on spreadsheets. So. It it is hard to quantify, but it would take the hours that we do this times the town accountant's salary, my salary. And there there is some savings here, but it's tough to explain that at time.
Now, not everybody gets a step every year, so some do and some don't, so you have to find out who are, how many are. This year, and then you can apply it to that, you know, it's. If everybody were getting a one percent step, now you'd say payroll plus one.
Right.
Plus three.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Having to go through.
Do we have to do this again and again, because, you know, within five years, we bring in a bunch of new employees, and then they're all, you know, we do another salary. Study and find, well, they're kind of not in line, so we'll have to step it up at some point again, to make everyone impaired.
It's like, we did this about five or six years ago.
Yeah, five years.
Me being the town.
It was a big deal.
In fact, we're supposed to do it every five years or so, yeah.
In fact, I think actually you have to do at least a portion every three years, and then a big one every, you know. Which we have not done.
I can give you an anecdote, so when you look at our wage scale, it's built up forty hours. So when people go on the website and they look at our wage scale, they see a certain cost. When you do the math, you calculate thirty five, which is our average employee, and what we offer, it's far less than they thought, so that initial. Offer to them, whether fair or not, whether that pay is appropriate or not, is different, so there's that hurdle that we have to overcome. So having clarity, just an hourly rate with the offer sheet that says thirty five and articulating that has has some value. Also, the salary numbers on those wages, there were some employees that were were hired at the salary rate. Which is a forty-hour calculation, not a thirty-five, so those salaries are. Not aligned with the thirty-five-hour wage employees, which caused this difference, it's a really long answer to. Yes, you should always do a market analysis every five years, because the market changes, but if you. Create some structure, if you create some structure around your wage plan, it should be much less of an impact, it should be.
Part of this solves that thirty-five forty issue.
It does, if you stuck to this discipline-wise, which is hard to say, because we'd all have to be in the room and agree to it for the next ten years, this would solve. This would help solve it. There'll be one-offs that we have to adjust, but that's a lot different than, say, let's change our entire wage scale and throw eighty thousand to make it more fair.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
I'm I'm fine until we start talking about how we're going to pay for it.
Right, okay, in principle, right. Let me drop down to the, I think what's easy is the bottom one, the CO eight HS van driver, ten seven. Anybody have a. Question or concern about in principle, supporting that request?
That's multiple drivers, right, that's multiple part-time workers, not a.
It's really hours of driving.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've been using that number of hours, and the, you know, so this is not based on, you know.
Based on need data that's already been, yeah, what they've already determined is the need. Okay, and then the town clerk stipend, Ryan, maybe you want to quickly explain. How that is absorbed in the wage change, the. How you think about that as part of the change in the wage scale?
The drivers?
No, the.
I'm sorry.
Clerk stipend.
So the, I hate talking about individuals, but the the town clerk is one of the most underpaid positions in our town, so this is a department head who's elected. And just candidly female, which is two strikes against you in terms of parity statewide. This position got a big increase, but if you compare responsibilities and department heads, they should be at this level, and the and the pay is here. So a lot of town clerks, because they're elected and because they're underpaid around the state, are advocating for stipends and tying it to. The extra hours they have to spend salary doing election covers and the other items. So the stipends are away, and and the town clerk associations are are asking for these stipends to try and create some more wage parity. I think we should just pay our town clerk in line with responsibilities and other department heads. Especially thinking forward to, if you are considering making an appointed position, then it should be aligned with department heads and not. Something you worry about because it's an election line, but this will receive a lot of attention, because it is, it is voted by itself.
It will have to be voted by itself, even if we say it's great, it'll be its own one.
Right.
So, long answer, but I think, I think it's better to pay. Close to market than to do a stipend to try and overcome some cost.
And have you already, and I I take it you've already included that in the seventy nine thousand that's here under the wage proposal?
Not the total amount that you think it should be, so that's why there's still the twenty five hundred hanging up there.
I think it should, I think it should go away, if you're going to do it, put it in, roll it into her salary generally.
Okay, that's, okay, well, that answers that, okay, now, now, now that becomes clear, so it, we're, really, the twenty five hundred shouldn't even be there.
I mean, just.
That's an elected official who, in her budget, asked.
It might not pass, right? Whereas the stipend, we could just do it, right? So I mean, there, there is a risk, there is a risk.
Fine twenty five hundred dollars to give her.
I was just going to say, we could, yeah. Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, right, because the stipend we can do without any other oversight, that's up, that's something within the board's prerogative, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Assuming we pass the HR by law, I'm sorry to always make it.
Oh, yeah, okay, no, I, okay, gotcha.
What is the purpose of the stipend, I mean, you know, so, I mean, normally a stipend is for something, so what would we say if it's?
For extra hours, we're in early voting.
Got it, okay.
Okay, but assume that's, if the wage analysis were to pass, this clerk stipend would come off. Okay, so that leaves us with sustainability, and that's one we discussed quite a bit Tuesday night. Think, if you didn't see it, there was an email this afternoon from Debbie Bentley, the chair of the ESC. Outlining some reasons why the, they support. This position, and then, of course, we had that draft job description to look at. Again, I know we have to discuss how we would pay for it, right, but if in principle, in terms of. Do we support this in terms of a service that that we think would be valuable to provide to the town? Are we. Supportive of this, assuming we can figure out a reasonable way to pay for it.
Close the door.
That's what I say too.
I have a question before I answer. Ryan, does this sixty five thousand include benefits? About how much more would that be? Thirty percent?
Uh, anywhere from zero to eighteen thousand.
How do we, I mean, that begs a larger question, which has been bandied about for many years, Carrie Kissinger being a strong proponent. How do we budget incremental people without? Kind of look at the salary, we don't, to Nathan's point, it's come up with, teachers, it's come up with. Many times, like, shouldn't we?
New positions.
New positions.
We don't typically include the cost of the benefits, yeah.
If you don't know what the cost of the benefits will be.
You can, if you know on average, I mean, on average, you'll be correct, right, if you know that. Seventy percent of people take benefits or whatever, then they have a thing, I mean, you can make an educated guess, it's not, it's typically not zero.
So because of that, we build in, nobody likes this word when you're budgeting, but a cushion into the health insurance line to account for coming on and off. There is a point where you run out of that. Which is, we could, we could absorb a one percent increase in that line item this year, but we're increasing it because we know this position might also carry.
Yeah, well, it's two different questions, so there's the how to pay for it question, which you've answered. But there's the how to evaluate question, which you don't answer, like, a sixty five thousand dollar. Position could really be, you know, eighty five, maybe not that much, but it could be, you know, seventy, seventy five. It could, and and so. There's not really correct answer, but I think. I agree, I think, with where Nathan's going, that it's useful as a metric to think about these as fully loaded. Positions when we think about the cost then.
Yeah, at the same time. We've just gone through, you know, some hiring, where we didn't look at that.
We didn't, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't have.
No, but maybe we need to sort of have that be.
But there's going to be new hires.
What other hiring do we do?
Well, we just did the TA, we just did the town planner.
But we're going to have.
Oh, I thought you meant tonight.
Ronnie, I don't want to type tonight. You've got, you know, DPW vacancy, the CO eight, the vacancy is coming up, and we should start thinking.
So maybe we need to think about this for the budget process, right, for next year.
Some of those vacancies were using up benefits, it might not be, and so.
For tonight, I think.
For tonight, I think, okay, and I would not have, I wouldn't take the time tonight. We have more important things to talk about.
So are we okay leaving this here for now, and let's get into the discussion about where the, how we would pay for this? Because we still have a whole nother section about the warrant items and the capital expenses, we hope to try to get to tonight. If the people are, folks are okay with that, let's move to the sort of discussion about. Available funds, and do you want to help us with this part?
I mean, Ryan can leave, I think to finish the pages on. If we were to accept all the cuts and the requests, it leaves us with. Hundred eighty two thousand, thereabouts, right?
One eighty three.
In other words, let's remind ourselves, in the prior page that we started with, we made a sort of commitment that we would cap the tax bill. And that bill was only the, what, you know, in some circles would be called a level service budget, right, no ads. And no cuts, but no ads, here, we have a couple puts and calls, and then we get down to hundred eighty three, and now we talk about, and again, we have not yet touched. Warrant articles or CapEx, we're just talking about the OpEx.
Operating, yeah.
And that, and, you know, again, to calibrate all of us, generally speaking. We are reluctant to apply ARPA. Or CPA or free cash to recurring expenses. Generally speaking, that's the philosophy, right? You you use those things for one times, so. So we're at this gap, and now you want to take over.
Ryan and. And how to bridge it? Just take the twenty five hundred out, that fixes everything.
Uh, so again, you're, and I think rightfully so, self-imposing this this limit on on costs, right, because you can. You could increase the taxes if you want to. So if you were going to, if you were going to add these additional expenses above guidance. Then making these prudent cuts, I think, is is fairly uncontroversial, leaves you with about a hundred and eighty thousand, and I would say even a little deeper, probably two hundred thousand. In order to get to that five hundred number, because even the guidance budget was five eighteen. So the. A way that you mentioned the other day, on, what was that, Monday, all the way on Monday, was to use free cash. I also have never recommended using free cash for an operating budget. However, in a year where half of your quote-unquote new revenue is going towards a, what is a. A spike in a regional school costs would. A spike in a regional school costs would be the time that you would use that if you wanted to add these additional expenses. You could not fund one of them, which would certainly reduce, reduce the expenses. You also have the ambulance reserve fund, so this is used sometimes to supplement the budget. Um, it's easily justified because it covers ambulance costs in the fire department. But what it doesn't do is create you a stable of funds to pay for an ambulance, which is the best way to do it.
I wouldn't.
And they're expensive.
It's the same as free cash.
Everything is at the end of the day, but.
And then you have. Free cash and, and ARPA to use. So knowing that you couldn't quote unquote afford. Some of these expenses is why I made the, made the recommendation to use ARPA funds on a two-year grant trial for the sustainability position. Because it would take the pressure off the budget if you were gonna fund that position. Um, that's no different than using free cash or ambulance reserves to also fund these positions. Um, and then the third piece is. You have relatively, we have relatively conservative estimates here for revenue. So I did send around and I can show it here. The biggest. Area where you have some, some room is in local receipts and hopefully state aid. If state aid comes in, then you have. Some low hanging reduction, low hanging fruit reductions. So this is, it's a complicated, fairly complicated spreadsheet, but what it's showing you is. You estimate local receipts this time of year, so you say in FY twenty four, we're gonna collect X from our. From our local receipts or the, the items that people come in and pay for, think dog licenses, building permits, motor vehicle excise tax. You want to be conservative with these estimates, because if you don't hit your number, you have to cover that somehow. Whether it's one-time funds like free cash or increasing the budget and going to town meetings. So you do wanna be conservative. A conservative number is about ninety percent of actual is where you would wanna estimate and then build your budget off of that.
Excuse me, Ryan, is it possible? Oh, great. Get that green column.
So what we've recommended in this budget for you is eighty one percent of actual, of the five-year average. So these things can, if everybody buys a, a bunch of nice cars and pays their excise tax, then that can go up. If people decide to keep their cars for a year, that motor vehicle excise can go down. Again, I can't emphasize enough, you don't wanna. You don't wanna level it right at where your expenses were last year because of the variability of these costs. But you do have some room here. Let's say you wanted to take. A twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar swing at these estimates, then you could say afford more on the expense side. What this will do is put some pressure on bringing in, bringing in revenue and also reduce your free cash generation. Which has big impacts on the next discussion, which is one-time costs like capital. So in combination, the two hundred thousand dollars could be reduced by relaxing revenue assumptions. Uh, using one-time funds or not funding pieces.
And so, uh, the revenue assumption, what the eighty one point five percent is. A, it's a, is that a relaxation of what we might have done in the past?
It is not. It is what is building this budget currently. So.
Okay.
If you wanted to relax it, you could add, say. Twenty five thousand to motor vehicle excise tax in your estimates, specifically target that, and then that would allow you. Some comfort in adding that expense cost. This isn't entered until November, which is why it sounds less specific, like more of an art than a science.
Huh, so let me ask a question, Ryan. One of the things that I've forgotten, it was like an aha moment that you just said, was. The spike in our assessment for CH, CCHS, what, what was that? One-year spike that we were, how much was that?
So in an average year, ten-year average, three hundred thousand dollar assessment, this year was six hundred and thirty.
About three hundred, like, three hundred thousand dollars that we. And, and how many years before that drops back down?
If everything holds, which is, never does, next year you're looking at about a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar assessment, and the year following, it goes back up again to six hundred thousand.
We're in, we're in a few years of unfavorable demographics.
And then it's supposed to level off, it's supposed to, assuming that the school holds costs.
Okay, so it's six hundred, so it's a. I'm sorry, one more time.
Six, four, six.
Six, four, six. That's just what the assessment, or is that the increase?
That's the increase to assessment.
No, it, no, it's the total.
No, it's definitely not the total.
No, I mean, the six hundred thousand.
Our total increase in assessment.
I mean, our assessment is five million bucks or something.
No, 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 right. But you're saying it's, it's.
It's the increase.
Average has been three hundred thousand now, it's, enough.
When you say level off, is it leveling off at the six hundred thousand number?
No, back down to three to four range. Yeah, for a couple of years, but projecting out more than five years is a.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we projected, no, it's not that hard. I mean, I projected ten years ago and somewhere in, because the kids, you know the kids. There's a few other.
But you can have people move into the community that, that, the averages, the averages.
I'll show you the data.
Really big variable with the new middle school.
Okay.
Because you know the kids.
Yeah.
So that new middle school in Concord is, is a really strong variable that is unknown.
Right.
In theory, that would attract more students from private school.
Yeah.
Which would increase Concord's share, decrease ours, but that's.
Yeah.
It's gotta finish, it's gotta path finish and then actually drop.
Yeah.
Right. And so, but that variable is not built into the dropping down to, back down to four. Okay, so we have this year that's a peak. Next year, we're back to like two hundred thousand less. Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand less, and then we're back up again, and then we're hoping it's gonna drop back down.
If you, if you give me one second, I can actually put it on the screen.
Yeah, the Concord middle schools were really.
And I just, you know, anything, anything we use one-time funds for now is just going to cause a problem next year.
Oh, yeah, no, there's no question.
Right? It's just gonna make it so much worse next year. But if it actually is a peak. And that we, we're just offsetting that with one-time funds, then I feel a whole lot more comfortable about it.
I agree, I totally agree.
I just totally don't feel comfortable about using one-time funds for anything operational, because, you know.
Right, don't get addicted, don't get.
Next year, we're in a lot of trouble. Because our base is starting at that higher number.
I'm not worried about next year, I think we're worried about twenty six.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty six is gonna be a challenge.
So this is the.
Right.
Projected assessment, just to visualize what we're talking about.
You see.
I'm sorry, I'm.
Into the left, we were the beneficiaries of favorable adjustments, you may remember.
Nineteen, yeah.
Quite a few, we had a reduction.
FY twenty two is great if I.
Coming, it's coming.
Uh, I was off by a year, so in, in estimate. Um, this is a bubble year, then decent year. Reduction year, and then a really big.
And then up again. Yeah.
So if we're good at our jobs and smart, we would put stabilization funds aside to try and level this off, assuming everything holds and there's no change.
So I mean, that would argue for, like, what we were talking about last time was using stabilization funds to even fund other things. I would think, and wouldn't wanna do that, but maybe use it just to fund it this year, fund this increase. And then hold off so that we can do it again.
Yeah, but, 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 yeah, but I, I mean, it is kinda. It's fundamentally not different, right? Because you would repunish stabilization fund with free cash to get it back to level. Yeah, but it may look bad.
It's all money, it's gotta come from some.
Yes, yes, we've already collected it, we're not gonna have to raise tax, and I wanna.
No, 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 you would. I mean, you, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. If we applied free cash to this bump or some percentage versus we took it out of stabilization. And then put free cash into stabilization.
No, no, no.
It's the same.
Talking about putting the free cash and stabilization on the two low years, so that when we get to.
Oh, okay, I see.
And I, I just wanna say, by the way, that, uh, we knew about this bump coming in twenty four, and the teachers are taking only two percent that year. Where they're.
The CPS.
That's why.
CPS teachers, yes.
The, the.
Yeah, but I'm just telling you that at least, you don't, at least, you know that we've already done some.
We've done some.
We know what to expect here.
Here.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I would.
This is, this is also the year.
They deserve some credit for.
They do.
Where you're, you're now discussing buildings. That's where that would start to kick in.
Right, yeah.
So you have some debt capacity, but you also have this operating budget pressure, so that's, twenty seven is gonna be all about how do you fit in. Capital costs.
Those of you who are.
Who are running this year.
Having some more debt capacity, but by the time we hit twenty five.
When you roll up here.
Down too, for the buildings that we've already built. Oh, this, we, we will have some capacity in there.
So again, I'm conscious of the time here. We've got Ryan for another half an hour, but we were in theory ending by, by seven thirty and doing the HR. Uh, work with Aubrey before then, so. Where are we on spending either?
I felt better about before this.
Cash or stabilization funds. Uh, for, to cover the two hundred thousand dollars. Roughly, you know, in items beyond guidance.
Hundred and eighty three, is that what you're saying?
Ryan was saying.
Probably should.
With the.
Talk about it is two hundred thousand.
Just a. A li- a little primer for me. Uh, free cash is money that has been collected but was not spent, right? So it's.
Or projected and received. Under projected and received.
Right. Um, but it's taxes that we collected that we didn't spend. Stabilization fund is free cash that we've moved into a fund.
Yes, stabilization is a protected savings account. Free cash is either unexpended or realized funds.
So free cash, we can, working with income, we can, we can spend. Stabilization fund, we have to go to town meeting?
Both, you have to go to town meeting.
Okay. Both, we have to go to town.
Stabilization, you need a much higher threshold. For, for the purposes of this discussion, given how much free cash you have, to use stabilization would be inappropriate. So it should be free cash.
Why don't you wanna do, wanna talk us through just very briefly the free cash situation?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's me.
I think it was like one two, one point two million of excess is over twelve percent, is that right?
Four.
So, ag- again, these, this is our, in best practice. So Department of Revenue, bonding agencies, they like to see ten percent reserve. That's just sort of a magical number in the municipal finance world. So this is the current situation in Carlisle. Stabilization funds are one point two. Free cash is four point two, for a total of five point four million in what we would call reserve funds. So, um, I, I do believe it's prudent when you're in this financial situation and protecting a bond rate to, to be even more conservative. So a twelve percent is, is a pretty conservative reserve number. So if you took twelve percent of the projected operating budget, uh, then this doesn't include additional requests, so you'd have to do all the maneuvering we're discussing. Discussing, that's keeping four million and change in reserve. So if you subtract out what we have from what we should have, it leaves you one point four million in capacity. The current proposed capital plan, based off discussions with the Finance Committee and all the department submissions and. Capital plan's still whittling down, but it's eight hundred and eighty four. You have two hundred and fifty nine thousand in warrant article considerations. Plus, you discussed something for the Public Safety Facilities Committee, which would increase that warrant article number. So, um, if you did all that spending, you'd still have two hundred and sixty, three thousand above your reserve target. And, uh, that number would be four point three million in cash, in cash and stabilization to roll over to next year. Now, all of the cuts and other things suggested will decrease the ability to generate free cash, taxing people for money not used. So, uh, next year, when you consider looking at. Anywhere from four to a million dollars in expenses, you won't have as much free cash either. Trying to give you good answers, but also good information. So, um, everything you do impacts something.
But I think, I mean, just maybe simplify and go to Nathan's point. But if we, if we assume that twelve percent is our target over time, we have a million four left, but. There is plenty that we can spend a million four on in the capital needs over the next few years. There's no shortage of. People who will raise their hand to help us spend that money. So I think for the, just the little moment we're in, we have to think about whether we wanna use any of that to close this OpEx gap. Before we get to capital. So.
Any of this one point four million.
Apply any of the one point four million to this two hundred thousand gap that.
Right.
On the operating side, and then clear the deck and then talk about capital. So, you know, philosophically, I'm kind, pretty much aligned with Nathan, like. Use zero of it. Uh, but it's a gap, and so we either use zero of it, or we have to, we either use some of it, or we have to trade down some of the adds that. Ryan listed. I think that's.
We need, there's still a whole lot to talk about in the capital plan and the warrant.
We're gonna get to that, yeah.
Right, but I, I guess I would just think about it a little bit differently than, than it is here. You know, we're looking at, okay, do we do the sustainability role? Do we do the coal increases and all of that? And how do we pay for that? And maybe we use stabilization or the, the free cash.
Yeah.
Um, if we use the free cash for that, um, I would prefer to say. Okay, let's decide if we're gonna do that and put it into the operating budget and say, how much of this temporary increase? Should we pay for out of free cash?
The, the, the RSD.
Yeah. Because that's the temporary thing.
Right, right, but.
That's, that's the thing that will hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, it's kinda saying the same thing at it from a different angle, but it's still.
Kind of a, yeah.
How much of the free cash add should we apply to the operating budget? However, we.
Yes, well, for me, it's how much should we offset this spike?
One spike.
Because it is kind of a one-time thing. We know that it's gonna be one time for two years. Um, you know, but separated by a year.
Yeah.
And I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with saying, we have this spike, we shouldn't increase taxes. To pay for that spike, because that tax increase remains there.
Right.
And then we're gonna spend it next year, and then we're gonna have to increase the next year because we have another spike, and it's just this.
Cycle.
This cycle. So anything that's an anomaly, we should be, that's what, that's to me what free cash is for, so we're not raising the tax base because of an anomaly.
Right.
And, but you said at the beginning, you'd put the, um, these items that we've been discussing, the, the. The ones that are outside sort of the guidance budget into the operating budget.
Yeah, in, in my head, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, but, but then we still have to pay for the, the cost of those. In addition to then using free cash to pay for the spike.
Yeah, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, obviously, we still have the budget problem. But right now, if we look at the operating number budget, that was the, you know, the number we're gonna try to get below, get to five hundred.
Yeah.
In there is this spike.
Right.
For our assessment.
Okay, I got it.
It's going in my head, I'm taking that out.
Gotcha.
It's, it's offset by all those other things that we're, we're saying that, you know, maybe we're saying we wanna.
Instead of taking these things out, you're taking the spike out.
Got it. That makes sense, and I think that also, um.
Makes sense, and it.
Um, it's just a logical thing. It's not, hey, Ryan, go, we run the numbers. It's just, you know, the way I'm thinking about it.
And a way to present it that I think also makes more sense to the general public.
We don't wanna raise taxes for this spike, because the taxes, the tax rate doesn't go away.
Right, right.
And I think, again.
How much free cash would you apply? All two hundred? I mean, then it gets back to.
Depend upon what our final. Number is just for, just for operating.
Well, I think, let's go back to that.
How much would have to apply in order.
Well, it's right there, so let's.
We know what it is.
It's the.
It was the.
It's two hundred if you take all the ads in, and the question, you take all the ads in.
What, well, we've sort of decided in principle, we want, we. We support the ads. Question is, do we support them enough that we wanna take two hundred thousand in free cash?
Well, I mean.
The spike, four hundred thousand though? It was like two hundred thousand last year and six hundred thousand, so the spike.
Is three hundred thousand.
About, it's about three hundred.
So in this year, in this year's assessment, um, two hundred and fifty thousand is related to new spending at the high school and three hundred and eighty is the enrollment shift.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a spike.
No, no, no.
Three hundred and eighty is.
Three hundred and eighty.
Was the difference though, but it's, so that's why I'm saying that's the spike. That's what we're covering.
I know, but you don't need to.
And.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so if you took that two fifty out and you put our hundred and twenty five in, the, the extra things that we're talking about. The sustainability, the wage structure and stuff, you're almost, you're almost at a flat. Doesn't.
I mean, I think.
You're almost the same amount.
Yeah, almost. I, I think that that's, I, I don't think I would do it that way. I think I would put everything in.
Right.
And then say, okay, what, what number, in order to get back to our five hundred, how much money do we need? And can we justify that because of the spike? But only, only cover that because if, if we throw three hundred thousand in, we may, perhaps budget may be over the, you know.
Yeah, but we're not, we're, we're throwing less than that in.
All the way to the right.
It's like a hundred and twenty-eight we were talking about, right?
Okay.
And you didn't, Ryan, you, you, you sort of held back on the final number for use of.
One to twenty-three.
Local receipts. So.
Well, no, we, we talked about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
In the, uh, right, uh, changing in the motor vehicle excise.
No, I don't think, I think that's like micro doing it.
Yeah, but every little bit helps.
It's going to generate free cash, more free cash if you don't do it, less free cash if you.
So for two hundred thousand, so here's the thing then, if we're two hundred thousand, you recommend using two hundred thousand of free cash. And if the answer is no, then something off that list has to go away. Of the three thirty-nine.
Our spike is far over two hundred thousand though, right?
Right, but then you have another spike coming down to you. I mean, there's no reason to use more than you need to use. You only need to use two hundred thousand. You're well within the spike, yes. But you wouldn't use all of it if you don't have it.
Yeah.
So a way to overcome free cash usage is if you were going to spend one point two million because of new capacity next year or new, new revenue, you would hold yourself to a million to cover that gap. You would carry the two hundred thousand. So you're not using it again next year. But you have to be disciplined and do that over multiple years.
Yeah, I didn't need it.
So if you're expecting everything to cost one point two million next year, you would hold yourself to a million in new spend in order to overcome the lack of revenue you'll have from using free cash.
How much new spend do we have this year?
Um, with this addition, it's one point five.
I, I just, I'm just more like, I don't know, look at it a different, I, it.
Well, well, here's a, here's a suggestion at this point in the evening. Are we, I mean, we could ask FinCom to help accomplish this.
Yes.
By, if we're saying to them, here's what we would like to do in the operating budget in terms of these expenses we've outlined beyond the guidance budget. And we are comfortable using free cash. We want you to then figure out with our finance department and Ryan, what, how you would do that. But obviously we don't also need to look at the warrant articles and the capital spending.
Yeah, so let's.
So I'm, hope, I'm thinking if we could jump ahead to that, we've already got.
Well, we have as much time as we need. He just goes away.
Right. Aubrey, are you okay beyond seven thirty if we don't get to the HR thing? Okay.
Should you go to warrants first?
Good. I'd just also like to know which number we're really talking about. Are we talking about a three thirty-nine number or the one eighty-three number?
No, one eighty-three.
Okay, so we, that is what the difference is. That's, and it's close to the difference in the spike.
Oh, it's less, way less.
It's less than the spike.
It's half. Less than the spike.
The spike's three hundred thousand.
Actually, one eighty, seven hundred.
Yes, right. They're all important, twenty-five hundred dollars, but.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's half the spike.
So I guess to me, that, um, I, I feel way more comfortable to say, you know, uh, I think we need and not only want, but we need these, the, all these things.
Okay, alright, fair enough.
Need all of the deficit things?
The add.
The add things. Well, I would see the impact of the warrant article.
That, yeah.
Right, so let's go to that.
Okay.
Let's move.
But we have a proposal on the table for the operating budget and we'll come back to it. Uh, let's, yeah, so let's look. First of all, do you want to look at long-term?
I think we should look at warrants.
At warrants first, okay. Um, which, if you're looking at the packet from Monday, it's, uh.
I think we're all on the spreadsheet that Ryan.
Yeah.
We're using.
The warrant article.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
So walk us through the latest and greatest thing then. Some of these, some of these are going away right now.
Yeah, can I, right, I'll just, you want me to speak to the conservation stuff?
So the reason we're speaking to this is, um, conservation put in placeholders that they weren't sure they would be able to get done before fall town meeting or next annual town meeting. So we asked them to clarify because of the need on all of the free cash.
And so the first item is not, uh, they're not ready to ask for that at this.
The fifty K?
The fifty thousand for the NOI and the, um, right, so then the, and the three hundred thousand, which is the bog restoration is, uh, they've got a CPA application in.
Okay.
For that one.
Put CPA in that column.
Oh, I saw that somewhere.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Yeah.
Put it out to the right.
Okay. So.
And the library renovation is also a CPA, uh, application. And the Greeno Conservation Land invasive plant, um, the, the sense is that that could be covered by the, um, if you go further down, the Greeno Barn, uh, down at the bottom.
She said she wouldn't be ready anymore. I think she told you that.
On the, on the.
Eight thousand.
Uh, well, that, no, it was the fifty thousand, she said, but the eight thousand could be absorbed, I think, in the Greeno Barn. Uh, funds listed the hundred and fifty thousand that's down there under the town administrator.
Is that one to be based upon, I think we're going to reach out and get estimates? Is that based upon estimates or is that?
It's, um, it's higher than the highest estimate, which was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, and that's why they're saying they can pay the eight thousand out of that?
Yes, but there is an important note here. So there's a lot of, um, recommendation on the Greeno Barn to make it as, as sustainable as possible, the, the demolition of it.
Yeah.
So three things in particular have been discussed and, and more if, if you allow it. Saving the, the wood that's in the main barn, which is, which is some really nice wood. The, the cupola is of interest to our historical society. And the slate roof is, is also, um, an item that most people would consider sustainable. The issue is when, it's a lot easier to just crash it down and, and throw it away. So depending on how sustainable you want to make this, and it will be your call, um, it could increase the cost. So I was not sure if the select board was going to entertain that, so I have not reached out and asked. But my guess would be adding anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand for the delicate removal of some of the sustainable.
Do we know if those slates match the ones on the, on the, um, library roof? I'm serious.
That's a good point. Be great. Even if it doesn't match, put it on the back.
Right.
So I did, I did talk to council, um, we would have quality requirements in the RFP for demolition, saying you have to put these aside. We could put them at the DPW and have people first come, first serve. Uh, you could also, anything that's in the excess of ten thousand, you could dispose of by selling it off or giving it to, say, uh, a historical society wants the cupola, if that's valued at over ten thousand, you'd have to give it to them.
Okay.
Which I don't think it would be, but the slate in the wood would definitely.
Yeah, does that actually have to go through some kind of a contract thing or we have to declare it surplus and?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But if we put it at the DPW and we let people come and take it.
It'll be gone.
We just declare it stolen.
Collect insurance.
I wish I had done this three years ago when I rebuilt my barn. I, I would have come and gotten it myself.
But anyway, let's, let's go, yeah, that's the, um, uh, just to back up a second. So the accounting, the first accounting, the fifteen eighty is minor, you know, that's very small. And then there's the fifty thousand for the chart of accounts and update in which I think we've talked about a little bit before, it's very much needed. Um.
So the, the more you sharpen this, the more it gets put on Kim and Kelly, which they're capable of doing. So the, the thing that's most variable is the consulting hours to find this. So if you wanted to take money off it, from five to ten thousand would be fine. Knowing that the more you take off, the more you're putting on the team. Five thousand for sure is fine.
Just leave it at fifty.
That's two different bosses saying.
Yeah, so let's, let's, if, if you're saying, if you're saying we could take five off, let's take five off. Let's put it at forty-five thousand. And then, uh, and so that changes the bottom line.
But I do want to put money, I personally would advocate putting money into the Greeno Barn for sustainability.
Yes, I would too. Those three items, I think. Yeah, I, I don't think we want to go beyond that this time around, but the three items you mentioned, I think are worth it.
So should we put two hundred thousand or?
Oh, front, fronts to remove the Greeno Barn?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, you need to add money, twenty-five and fifty, so.
Well, you know what? Yeah.
Then we'd only be, we'd be taking out five thousand and adding twenty fifty thousand.
Yes.
But I mean.
May, may I suggest adding fifty and then I know you want to do it so we can go get a number?
Yeah.
That might come down before town meeting.
Before town meeting.
Okay, that would be worst case. Well, best case thing, worst case money.
You're two fifty, your, your, your warrant articles are now.
Hundred K. And or two fifty?
Yeah, well, two hundred, two hundred there.
Okay.
Makes two.
Three fifty-four, five eighty?
Two fifty-four or five eighty, general.
I had two fifty-four and you had two forty-six?
I took out the eight thousand.
Oh, you did? Okay, no.
Yeah.
Change it to two hundred, we can sneak that in there as well.
Alright, fair enough.
He gets four, two forty-six, five eighty. Where did we do?
Oh, you put it in the two hundred.
Well, he took the eight thousand. Oh.
Alright, so we're good, we're good. I, I think that's.
Okay.
He got two forty-six, five eighty.
Out of the general fund, it'd be two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Five fifty, five forty-six. And we got, we got nine, sorry, he got nine forty-six and we got nine fifty-four.
Yeah, how did you?
How did that happen?
Did you take the eight thousand out?
Yeah. Oh, no, I didn't take the eight thousand out.
First one, the, uh, Granberry Bog NOI is.
Ah, that's how we left the four hundred.
Oh, I see, it just gets, gets.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
So two forty-six. Okay, so two fifty, we'll call it two fifty.
Uh huh, come on.
So we, we committed two hundred out of the free cash, two hundred and two fifty, so four fifty. Leaves us nine fifty.
Can we borrow the two hundred?
Why would you want to do that?
Do that.
And pay more money, uh, uh, interest on it.
And the free cash.
Oh, I.
I don't.
Be ready for that spike in three years.
So that would turn into operating costs. So you'd have to go back.
I think, at the moment, I, I, yeah, I, I don't think that's a great practice for these, these minor.
When you were sitting on.
You buy million dollar fire trucks, you.
Sure.
Okay, so we should probably go to.
Not to stir the hornet's nest, but you've also discussed adding.
Ah.
For a study.
For the.
Oh, yes.
Police and fire.
Here, right, um, yes.
Agreed on that or?
No, we're gonna.
We have to discuss it.
We've got it, right, but, but sort of the proposal on the table from the.
Right.
Task force was, yeah, twenty for the fire department, twenty for the police department, including the parking need. And, and the question is whether we want to also add something over and above that to the study to look, to have a larger concept, conceptual study done that would, uh, inform how you did the police and fire, even if you didn't do anything beyond that for a couple of years. And here's one thought about this, which is, um, we could, because the fire, the study of the, of the fire department is, is fairly clear, kind of what needs to be, what that study needs to do is to figure out how we would have an annex. That could be something that we could, uh, suggest is covered by ARPA and you get that study going right away. Um, and then we ask town meeting to fund the police study. Um, I personally would, would want it to be at a larger level, uh, because I think we don't want to box ourselves in to not being able to do something in terms of, of larger concept for how you deal with parking and town hall needs. But that's obviously a discussion, but, uh, one, so one, so you could have ARPA do, fund the study for the fire department and get that going right away. And then you take to town hall, town hall meeting at some level of study that's either just the police station and its parking needs or a, a larger amount for a broader study.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't you take both of them to ARPA?
You could.
You could.
With ARPA, you tell them.
I'm, I'm concerned about.
Delay or?
Delay and, and momentum and cadence.
I'm concerned about the number of studies we are doing.
You're concerned?
Yeah, this, this is the third study of the police department, right? At some point, we just have to take action. And I think we've studied this town out. I really worry that the study won't pass. I really worry that the study won't pass if we're saying that it's a total town center thing.
Right.
I also don't understa- I don't think, I don't understand what that, I don't have a concept as to what that whole town center parking thing is. And so I wouldn't be supportive of putting that to town meeting because I don't think we're going to know enough by then, you know? I don't want to just do something like this, you know, off the cuff.
Right.
Support ARPA use? Would you?
I would support ARPA use for two twenty thousand dollar studies.
You wouldn't touch parking? You wouldn't deal with parking?
Uh, I don't know what that means. You know, I don't know what the town, I don't know what that, I don't know what it means, right? We haven't really.
The people sat, the experts who studied it sat in front of us two days ago and said, you can't design the police station in a vacuum without considering parking. It was pretty clear to me that.
No, but I think the difference is.
Different thing.
Right, it's, well, it's, it's the, it's a smaller piece to, to make sure you deal with the need for parking for the police station. That's a smaller piece of the parking question, which is if you look at the town, this area of, of the town center, in, in a broader level, looking at how you might change this part of the parking out here in front of town hall and also try to look at, do you meet the needs of the COA? That's the, that's, that's, no, but I mean, remember it was sort of option, you know, one option is, well, it's, they were recommending, I think very clearly, the study of the fire and study of police, both at the twenty thousand dollar level, but that the police had to include addressing their need for parking. And so the discussion is.
They gave areas for that.
Right.
That's what they voted on and that's what they presented. What came up that night, I think.
Also, were they one of their?
On the committee, um, what came up that night was, well, maybe we should do a bigger thing.
Well, no, that was the third item in their report.
Yeah.
If you recall, yeah, they were recommending that the task force.
If we're talking about creating a town campus or if we're talking about addressing parking through, and, and pathways, which is what the master plan talks about.
Right.
That's a big project and I don't think we just do that off the cuff. I'm not against doing it. But I don't think we just say, well, let's throw a hundred thousand dollars in to do another study because we don't know what we're asking them to study.
Well, I would, I would advocate narrowing this. I think there's a middle ground, okay? I think that the fire station is relatively self-contained. And the Stu Roberts has been through the building and to your point and everybody else's. When he gave us, when he gave a quotation, it should be pretty firm. Like, he should be able to do whatever he needs to do in that parcel for the amount he quoted because he's very familiar. He did that, right? So I'm comfortable, whether we bifurcate them or put them together, to me, that one's self-contained. I heard loud and clear that, you know, even with the, the, what was it called? The T?
TBA.
TBA study, they didn't really fully address the parking. They just identified that parking would be needed. We know we have a wetlands issue. You know, it needs to be, that is not, just because they said twenty doesn't mean it's twenty, right? Because if you consider whether you're going to have a walkway over wetlands or you're going to have a parking lot, that's a big deal. So no matter what we do with police, I think, to, to say, well, no parking is later, I think is silly. So, so I think the instructions to whoever does the police thing has to be, consider parking and in particular, consider how we might get from police to this here. And by the way, it might now, so that part is maybe you disagree about everything, you know, some pieces of what I said, but by and large, that's consistent with the first two recommendations. The third piece to me is take this parking lot, which we know is inadequate, which we know is laid out silly with S curves and things. We know it's part dirt, it's a hill that we don't use and include that in a way that provides adequate parking for the police with its expanded footprint, blah, blah, blah. And by the way, if you ever come here in Mahjong, lots of seniors have come in, whether we build a COA thing or not, seniors are coming in here and the regular traffic. We just need more of it. And, and I might, I would rather do something for COA, but I'm okay stopping there. And just including that in the scope of the police, but not at twenty thousand because I don't think twenty thousand is enough.
Yeah.
And, and I would love to include a COA thing, but I'm hap- I'm okay with Nathan's point, not layering on. Just, but I don't think you can ignore the complexity of the parking and the importance of. You don't have to call it town center, but in fact, we need to draw these parcels together in a way that makes traffic sense. That's my opinion.
Travis, you've been kind of quiet.
Yeah, I have. I, I tend to agree with Nathan. I think we need to get this moving. We've studied this, at least I've watched, you know, over the years studying this, they came up with a plan, they've spent a lot of time. I think we need to get moving. I don't.
you know, over the years, studying this, they came up with a plan, they've spent a lot of time, and I think we need to get moving, I don't think we need to.
What is getting moving?
I, I think the fire department, fund that study, and I think the police department, we've.
But we. Sure, but at what level of dollars?
At their level of their number one and two.
At their number one and two, I think we just, we need to move, we have, we have the police department plans, I think, for, for.
We do, but they.
Some of those were out.
They were done without. Yeah, they were done with other, um, uh, different criteria, let's put it that way. Um, they were done being told, don't do anything about any parking, don't, and, and so they are constrained, they're not as good a plan as they could be, because they couldn't touch, they couldn't expand into where they are currently parking, because they had no other place to put cars, so the parking was never a consideration. And so I think the study that's being proposed is to look at those old plans in light of, you know, could they be improved if we, you know, deal with the parking?
How, what, what do you think as a board of our timing to, to accomplish these things? As far as, you know, if we go to town meeting, we get this study done, it, the study says, this is what you need to do for the police department, assuming the fire department kind of stands on its own, and that, that solves itself.
Right.
We go with the annex, we build that for the fire department, and that moves forward, but for the police department, what, what happens then? So, we then would need to go to the next year to get a set of building plans, that's gonna take a whole nother.
No matter what you do, you always have.
I know, I'm just trying to think through how to move this forward as quickly as possible, because I.
You have the year, your study window is this year, whether you do exactly what they asked, or even you only do the fire station, it's a year. So you might as well put into the year all the things you need, to, to say, I'm gonna deal with parking someday later, is just, to me, makes no sense.
Well, I think that we talked about, they're gonna deal with parking, because they have to deal with it, with it onsite as it stands alone, but not on a broad, broad sense.
Yeah, we understand.
They were saying, a little bit behind Greeno, um, the Green Cemetery, not Green, um.
Yeah, Cemetery.
Cemetery, yeah. And, and scoping going over the wetlands, that was what was in their scope. I would be supportive of using, spending twenty thousand dollars there, and twenty thousand dollars in the fire department out of ARPA. If we want to expand it to something bigger, I'm supportive of twenty thousand dollars out of ARPA, and go into town meeting on the other one, because I, I think that we're gonna get, I could be wrong, but I think we're gonna get a lot of input around the use of the land, and, and that, I think that people are going to care about that.
What happens behind the police department?
Yes, I think people will care about that, and so they should have a say before we spend money on, on, on a study. I think it needs, it would need to go to town meeting, and for me, anyway, and it would need to be, I think, much, much more plainly scoped.
Developed, yeah.
Than what we're talking about right now.
Right.
And because I, I think we risk not getting any study money, and, and that's just, we're going into that, saying, we may not get anything, and we can't then turn around and spend ARPA, if the town has said no.
Right, no, I agree.
Well, then they live with a smaller police station.
But I thought there's some fundamental efficiencies in the police station that we can't continue to, to look, we will not get accredited if they don't get, you know, the, the jail redone and the.
Living in democracy.
That's true, I'm not, I'm trying, I know, we're trying to figure out the, what makes sense, and this is, again, it comes to priorities, and is this where we're gonna prioritize our resources and our efforts, or are we gonna do it somewhere else, and?
What, what's the this?
It's a lot of money to do that parking, that central, the, the bigger.
The, the, well, I'm thinking of the police station, you said, you said, it, well, it'll just have to slip, and we live in a democracy.
I think it's incumbent on us, if we agree on a kind of action, to do our best to sell it to the public.
Yes.
If we fail it, that we fail it, but I just.
So, so let's get concrete here, if we're, if, i- it sounds like we're, am I right, in thinking that we're comfortable with ARPA being used to fund the study of the, uh, fire department?
Consider that one's done.
Right?
Yeah, okay. And, and as a representative of ARPA, uh, of the ARPA committee, if you go to the ARPA, you don't, in my opinion, don't even have to go to the ARPA committee, you know, you might.
You just say as a select word, we would like to fund this, using ARPA funds.
We don't want to bypass.
No, no, no.
But I mean, it is ultimately our.
The ARPA committee is very cognizant of the fact that it is your approval that counts, not ARPA committees. So if it's coming from you, we will certainly understand that, I'm sure.
And one advantage.
Send it back to you, right?
And one advantage to using ARPA funds is if it turns out there's a little more money needed, right, to, to do the actual fire station study for some reason or another, because of the septic or the whatever, right, you can come back to ARPA. And similarly, if it's cost less, the money gets returned to ARPA, remainder, so then we have the police station to deal with, and, um.
But I think.
We, we.
Studies, I thought I heard you say.
Well, no, Nathan was making a case that we really should take the second one to town meeting.
I would say if we're going beyond what they propose.
But beyond, but both of them would go to ARPA, both.
Oh, wait, so, so the figuring out parking for the police station that might involve going across the wetlands behind the cemetery, and coming up toward town hall along those wetlands.
They're due to town meeting.
Well, I, but I'm saying that study for the, for parking for the police station, it, they're looking at the land behind the cemetery and the wetlands behind it. And, and those wetlands are just on the other side of the little hill, you know, at the end of our parking lot, so if they conclude that instead of building a parking area on the wetlands, instead, it'd be smarter to build a pathway up to the town hall parking area, and, and expand that to provide parking for the police officers, right, I, right, that, that is a potential conclusion of the study, instead of doing some big thing on the wetlands, right? So I, I, I don't know, I don't think we want to be about the business of saying, the study is only gonna look at.
I agree with you.
Yes, the study's gonna look at the best way to solve the parking problem for the police station.
And that mayor. Just going off what, what I, what I read, what they presented.
Yeah.
What they presented for the twenty thousand dollar study was, uh, for parking, was that it would look behind the, the town cemetery, and it would look to do something like what they have done, um, uh, at, uh, at the Rite Aid, not a Rite Aid anymore, is it, the Walgreens, uh, in Concord, where, you know, they, they.
Yeah.
Over a little bit.
Yes, and they already.
Third thing that was not included in the twenty thousand was.
To look at the large.
Evaluating coming back and around, I think, as soon as we're evaluating coming back and around, we're talking about a significant impact on the Conant land, and I think that town citizens should have a say as to whether or not we're gonna spend money studying that.
Yeah, okay, uh.
That's what, that's just.
Yeah, I.
Because it's no longer stand alone, you know, that's, I agree with that.
Yeah, it's just, if you, I don't know if you've had a chance to go out there and look, what we're talking about, um, I, I, I don't think we wanna, uh, uh, limit the study that looks at the best way or options for how you address the pa- need for parking for the police station. And it, it may be that it's not feasible for either environmental reasons or cost reasons to do what you're describing by Walgreens, by, you know, by the Walgreens. What I was told, that someone on the task force, or somebody looked at, was, that was hugely expensive, and they had to get special permitting for it.
It could be, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not proposing at all, I'm just going based upon what they propose.
Right, but I.
But I'm just trying to say, I think we want the, the, the twenty thousand, it'd be interesting to go back to the task force and ask, how'd you come up with twenty thousand?
I was about to say, they pulled it out of thin air.
Right.
They told.
Right.
I agree with.
Originally, they were telling us.
But they did not do due diligence, uh, they have due diligence on the Stu Roberts study, because he gave them a quotation.
That was the quote again, twelve-five, so they've made it twenty thousand.
Because they had it for sure.
For the separate.
And then they said double it for this, without any consideration of what Barney's talking about.
Alright, so why don't we do this, just because it's getting late, why don't we say, we've already said, fire department's done, right? Why don't we say, okay, we're gonna go to town meeting, and we need you to scope out better what this study would do, and I would also include on that exactly what are the parking requirements, right, because they went, right, they, they said, they said it's from four to twenty. We can't do that, right, what exactly are, and it's not in the best case, I mean, if there's, if, if it's during transition.
It needs to be shift change, right, it has to be the maximum.
I don't know that I agree with that, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Let's us not decide that.
No, but I'm, I'm, okay, what I'm, what I'm saying is, they, they need to come up with the right.
So could I offer, uh, maybe a different one? If we were to authorize fifty K from ARPA for the whole thing, and if Stu comes in for cheap, right, and if this thing, they need, they do need to uh, specify, or, you know, as you said, they.
Do the scope.
Scope the thing to, to, to not be locked in one solution.
Right.
I'm reading it again, can I just read the thing? For the police, the purpose of the feasibility study will be to determine what can be done if the constraint is relaxed, because what the TBA one, we had those, we just said, we said you can't expand the building. So the question is, if you could get rid of those cars in there, uh, find a place, how would that change the design? And if the study determines that the cost is reasonable, the next steps would be to seek funding from the town to develop complete design documents and put the project out.
Which you always would do it. But what needs to be added that's silent, is if you relax the envelope, you need to come up with parking.
Exactly, and that's why we keep on.
You can't say four to twenty, you gotta figure out what it is.
Okay, but that would be the architects that are doing this feasibility study.
I know, I, I know, but what I'm saying is, I don't think twenty's enough, but I don't think it has to be a hundred. If we, if we just took ARPA, I agree that eventually the town has to approve, they would, if they do the study right, they'd say, well, here are a couple options of parking.
Right.
If it means incursion into Conant, of course we have to go to the town and make sure that, whatever it is, we have, if we do platform over the wetlands, we have to go to the town, I mean, it's gonna always go to the town, but to move the ball, and I agree with you, but not be short-sighted.
I agree, I totally agree.
Put in fifty, or sixty, you know.
Request from ARPA.
That we request from ARPA, and we move the study, and we do our best job, and then next year we deal with the results.
And did you just make a motion?
I didn't make a motion.
I thought I heard fifty thousand, that you moved fifty thousand.
So that's, he's fifty thousand for the police.
For the combined.
Combined, for both of them combined.
And maybe Stu Roberts is a little less than twenty, because he came in at twelve, and, you know, they should do what, a lot of what they had to do is already designed.
And it allows us to go back to ARPA if we needed more, for some reason or other, right, this police study gets more involved, you have to do, you know, whatever, whatever, right, um, how do people feel about, well, shall we put a motion on the floor, are we ready to consider that?
I want to hear.
Travis and Nathan?
We do it as two different things.
Sure, so what would you propose?
I would propose we do a motion on what we've already decided, which is the fire department.
Okay.
And we separate that from the police department.
The only reason I combine them is because there's a higher likelihood that the fire station will come in under, and the police station will come in over.
But it's all ARPA, right, so if it comes in under, that goes back to ARPA, and then we.
So what we do is twenty for fire, and we could say thirty for police, but, okay, so you want to put a motion on the floor for the fire department study?
I propose that, uh, we request from the ARPA committee. We, we require the ARPA committee to request from us, um, twenty thousand dollars for the fire department study as presented to us, and on, in our board selecting meeting on February thirteenth.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion on that one? All right, we can do this a voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it carries unanimously. The second motion would be about using ARPA funds for the study of the police station. David, do you want to make a motion?
I move that we recommend the ARPA committee to fund a study for the police station and related parking needs, including more than one option. More than one parking option.
At the amount of?
In the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on that one.
Yeah, just, so, with, with this is, is just saying to the public safety committee, we're, we're giving you ten thousand dollars more because we think that's needed. We need to know much better about what the parking requirements are, and we want you to use this, this, this study money to come up with multiple options on how we can address parking.
Yes.
And the other needs of the police station, yeah.
I, okay, yeah.
Maybe it's not multiple options.
I have too much history, but, for instance, they could not put the gun cleaning in the police department, because we couldn't read the footprint, okay, so it had to go outside somewhere. Once you put it outside that list, parking spaces, so the idea is, is exactly this, if we were able to put this, this inside, we would, and lose those parking spaces, how do we?
Right.
What, does it help us, or does it not help us?
That's what.
You know, I think it's exactly right, but I think we want to give them a little extra money, so, because if it really, really helps, now we need to find what to do with those cars.
I don't think thirty's enough, but.
Well, that's okay, we can go back, if, if, and, and we would wait until we got the, you know, we would get an eighty percent plan by the, before we went back, right, so we would, we would know where, we would know where we were, so.
But, yeah, but the, the motion that was made was thirty thousand dollars, study the police department, and, and, and the parking needs, and come back with multiple parking options.
More than.
That's, yeah, more than one option.
Yes, let's say more than one.
The motion was.
Yes.
Yes, that is the option.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Nope.
Everybody ready? All right, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed?
Excellent.
All right, the motion carries unanimously, all right, well done.
Yes, and it took us a while, but did it. Really nice that we've had a chance to have these discussions.
Yeah.
I really feel like sometimes we never.
Now, have we con- have we concluded then, um, we never, we haven't literally been at long-term caps.
So let's, let's review the bidding, we have one point four million in free cash above our floor, our self-imposed floor, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we kind of decided to use two hundred thousand to take care of our operating expense needs based on the fact that we had a four hundred thousand dollar spike.
Right.
We're kind of using half of that, and we have a bunch of things we have to do. We are now saying, rounded up to two fifty, around two hundred and fifty thousand in warrant articles that would be funded through free cash, not through CPA.
Wait, but didn't the fif- two fifty end up including some money for studies?
No, the studies was all.
They weren't in there, okay, no, I know we just said that, but I thought maybe that number from before.
Five eighty.
It's two forty-six, because he took the eight K.
Oh, sorry.
Let's just call it two fifty for the purpose of right now, so we have two hundred and two fifty, that's four fifty, out of one point four million, we have nine hundred and fifty K left. Now we should turn to the.
So if you look at the, um.
The capital.
Capital plan, which we don't have him here to.
I, I.
I can show the screen.
Okay, that'd be helpful, Aubrey, thanks, um.
The long-term capital, oh, that other one.
The green and blue one.
Yeah.
Aubrey will show.
Okay, that one, all right.
So here we are, yeah.
Aubrey, can you lock the, uh, columns, I mean, yeah, so.
The dates above, yeah. The years above, right?
Yeah, that's.
You go to view?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Might not freeze that one. Uh, sure, that would help too, um. I don't know if it'll freeze this one, but.
You can unfreeze everything.
Yeah, that's okay.
This is the top one, that's the.
Okay, what I would do is unfreeze, I'd unfreeze the pane, just go to unfreeze. And go to, uh, I would go to column, um, uh, C.
Closer by hitting the little.
C four. Go to column. And now go freeze panes, go to freeze panes and freezer panel. Nah, you don't need to, you're fine.
Actually, I know what I'll do, I'm just gonna.
Can you raise it up? Can you raise that little guy up, bar, that says, fucking Carlisle?
All right, this has been gone over somewhat, right? And spr- and some of it's been spread out into other years.
Right.
From what we saw before, um, well, so we're looking at FY twenty-four.
Right.
Right, that's the first blue column.
Right.
Um, and.
That's what we're talking about.
The, uh, right, everything from the school is pretty definite, right?
ARPA, the elevator, I'm told.
Oh, right, right.
I don't know, Kate, have you been approached on that?
We haven't, but I, I can tell you that we would, uh, certainly.
We haven't, but I, I can tell you that we would certainly be very receptive to it.
So let's.
If you scroll down.
Well, then, okay.
A little bit so we can see the rest of twenty-four.
You have to go.
Or do you want?
I would do them, I would do them one at a time, Barney, because.
Oh, do CPS first as a group, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have a hundred and forty-five, uh, forty thousand five hundred, which would go to ARPA, and I think it's in. If you shrink that just a teens of it, you could get all the.
Okay. Right, ARPA target.
ARPA, okay. Um, and then there's ten thousand for the.
Lighting.
Lighting. High priority for, oh, that's the outdoor lighting.
That really is critical.
That's the one we curse at all the time.
Yes, right, and frankly, if they came to ARPA for it, uh, we'd have no problem, but it's such small money, I don't know why it's not even in just.
Well, that was the conversation.
Ryan believes that we should instruct the school to.
Cover it in their operating budget.
I mean.
So fair enough, okay. So that's cool, all right.
Okay. I agree. Uh, ten thousand for the server room again. I kinda feel they should be covering that in their operating.
But a server room for the air conditioning?
Well, I'm not sure, is that the?
Air conditioning to keep the server room at constant temperature.
So that, ah, is that our, our servers there too?
No, we're in the old server room. It's so, it'd be, we need, we need to be clear as to which one I, I.
It does balding, I don't know if that helps.
Balding's at the school.
So this is new, is an old building, right?
No.
That's the new one.
Building.
We need new AC in the building.
There's a shitty AC, student.
Well, this is, what's a server room?
Well, that's where the computer is.
Oh, and.
I mean, it's just mission critical. I, you know, we're relying on school committee.
Right.
You know what, um, again, um, those small money things, I wish they would take care of themselves rather than nickeling and diming us.
Certainly instruct them to do that.
Forty-two K is for.
Security cameras.
Right, which they believe they need.
Which they believe.
I presume there were.
They've studied it for a while.
Well, there's been a lot of debate about privacy and this and that, so they have external.
Don't have any now.
These are for internal.
Getting into the building, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, they, they discussed all this and we told the former chief wanted them everywhere and I don't, I think that was. They didn't feel comfortable putting them in every classroom, but I think they need them more in hallways and in other areas so they can see if there's an event of.
Just to be clear, they presently have. Cameras on the outside of the building, so they can see who's coming in, you know, if you mentioned. This is about in the hallway cameras, which they believe they need. You know, that's sort of a good job.
Okay, fine, just leave it in and that could maybe be free cash. Free cash or, what does it say on that thing?
Just says mission critical.
Just mission critical. What do you think?
All right, and then.
Nathan?
Yeah, it's like I'm looking at the bottom line here.
I think.
Okay, forty-two K, uh, yeah, that's what if we took, and then forty thousand for the walk-in boxes should be inspected and upgraded.
Bridge and freezer RTUs.
They're not holding temperature.
I see, this is for food.
For food, you kinda got it.
Okay, fine. Um, but we don't have a who's paying it on that one, okay. Uh, forty K for.
This is the waste treatment, the MUA needs to be.
Well, yes, yes.
I think they have to do that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's health, safety and welfare, really, again, yes, mission critical.
And is that HVAC? I thought we were talking about using ARPA funds for that kind of thing.
Well, we were using it for, you know, air quality, not, but this is an HVAC for the water treatment plant. I'm surprised it needs HVAC. That, but okay, or maybe some things need to stay cool.
Well, it's the MUA stands for. Something.
Yeah, well, we're just trying to walk through it.
I'm just jumping ahead because we said that that was mandatory. Do we, so we play, pay to maintain plow truck at the school and multiple trucks?
Well, that's a question, that's a question if we.
Well, right now, they're saying they don't wanna be, they wanna be able to plow.
When they want.
When they need to plow rather than trying to wait until the DPW can plow. Um, I mean, that could be something we push and say we want to have our DPW cover that.
Yeah.
Um, but it's never been that way before.
Well, we can, but we're now, you know, a unified town, right?
Yeah, well, we're trying to unify and this would be a good place to start.
So maybe.
Okay, pushing back.
I, I think, I think we say no to that.
To the plow truck.
Just say no, okay.
Um, yeah, share, share services with DPW.
Yeah. Um, yeah, fifty K is a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's not, you know.
And then we have the used, oh, okay, now we're getting to the DPW.
All right.
So.
So what did we end up endorsing in this list then?
On the school side?
Ryan said that EPW, they had dropped something, they would drop the bucket truck.
They've already dropped it once.
Well, they had two number one priorities and two numbered.
Yeah, you can see them.
The sand and the, the sand and the body, whatever it's called.
Sand body and.
And the truck.
Dump truck went together.
It's got the dump trunks is priority, dump trucks is priority one.
Right, dump truck and the sand body go together.
Yes, yeah.
But they're two dumped, well, I see one is for a later year, gotcha.
Then he would take the roadside mower and the, um, lift, uh, thing and. Bucket lift are different.
Different.
Saying that we no longer have a superintendent. Do you think there would be any changes in services or the way we do business?
Yeah, there might be.
Uh, and should then we, I mean, I see, we, we still, we need the sand, you know, the dump.
I think you gotta.
Sand body.
You gotta do.
But I'm wondering if we, if, yeah, if we do let the roadside mower and the bucket truck slip one year.
I agree.
What is, what is chapter ninety funds? What are they going to be funding this, in this fiscal year? I mean, they, in the past, they have done things like trucks and.
Right.
Yes, and they can do plow trucks. Right, but they can't do other trucks, they can't.
Did you do chapter ninety? He didn't put chapter ninety.
When we bought the.
I don't see a chapter ninety, uh.
It's really stupid, yeah, that's right.
So put a question mark.
Question mark for chapter ninety.
Ninety on the sand body truck.
Or wherever.
So we're gonna get rid of the lift truck and.
So there is another column for funding source recommendations. It does show the MFC.
Oh, this is, oh, some of them are already funded?
Yeah.
Oh, are they funded? What is that?
Yeah, it was funded last, through, uh. Through last year's budget, remember?
Sorry, which?
We approved at a town meeting.
Right, but we haven't spent.
We haven't spent the money.
Wait, what's that, Aubrey?
I'm just gonna hide the last few years just so I can show all the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
So there we go, so now.
Oh, I see, they're already.
Why are we discussing them again if they've already been funded?
Well, but we haven't spent the money, so it's still if we.
Wait a second.
But it went to town meeting for these specific items.
Wait, 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 wait.
So some of this is from those.
MFC fund a truck. That, I, that makes no sense to me.
Oh, the bucket truck, the lift truck.
Yeah.
Right.
Trucks.
In twenty twenty-two.
No, not, that's, that's wrong. Yeah, that's, that's not funded in MFC.
Well, let's see.
Maybe.
And it also says, for instance, the roadside mower was funded in this current fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. So some of these. The money's already been appropriated?
Yes, my understanding.
And the bucket, and the sand body. Was already done.
I'm looking.
In twenty twenty-two. Huh. A lot of this looks like the money's already been appropriated.
Do you wanna look further up just to make sure that it's so? Okay, no, those still makes.
Yeah. Huh. That's basically their entire list for this, for FY twenty-four.
Twenty-three. For twenty.
There it's all virtual, it's hybrid. So he's on.
Probably in his office.
Yeah.
So for twenty twenty-three, uh, I believe all the articles were funded. Um, and we funded a cruiser, an APIS machine, ten thousand dollars worth of firearms. A trailer and two dump trucks.
Yes, but that, not MFC, so that was T, you know, ATM, what I would say. Instead of MFC, I should say ATM.
Oh, funded at all-town meeting.
Yes.
So I don't see a mower up there, uh, in.
You don't, okay. Let me see, what did the mower say?
For twenty twenty-three, let me look at the town warrant for twenty-one. Town meeting warrant, twenty twenty-one. We don't always put the warrants in the same order, hold on. Long-term capital requirements.
Yeah.
We did, uh. A roll-off truck, a cruiser, water filtration system for the school and well and sewer pump for the school.
Okay, so hang on, so let's see if any of those.
Cruiser, basically, they're asking for one a year. You drop down to the police department, one of the things that I think, they've got two in there for this year, I think we just knock that down to one. You know, under FY twenty-four, they have a hundred and twenty thousand. Basically, every third year, for some reason or other, they've been asking for two.
Okay, so. What's the green?
So. That was FY twenty-three, what's already been.
I used.
Said that their column Q is not.
Okay.
Anything in blue is in play.
Yeah.
So, it's more column Q.
All right, good stuff.
But, did you say that we got the cherry picker in twenty-two?
Nope.
No.
It's in green, we did it.
So not even an ATM?
Nope.
So, okay, so we shouldn't be looking at Q.
All right, good stuff.
Okay. All right.
So we're back to, I think, the suggestion Kate you had I like is move the mower and the bucket truck to the, to the right.
Right, well, they're, uh, they're not priority one.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
As you say, it may be that, uh.
And by the way, when we buy the mower, I was, would like us to be looking at electric one.
Yeah.
About goats.
Sheep and goats.
Didn't we hire goats one year?
We did.
What a roadside mower is, is an attachment that connects onto the back of a tractor.
Yeah, I know.
So I'm not sure you're gonna get an electric one of those.
Oh, I see, oh, it's, okay.
It's that thing that goes over the garb.
Yeah, okay.
Right, clears.
But if you wanna go for a sustainable truck.
Concord had one though, I think Concord has an electric roadside mower.
Five, yeah, not next to zero.
But anyway, we're proposing, you've got that up there, right, the mo, roadside mower and the, um.
So could you put the.
Bucket lift truck.
Column over as well?
Yeah, that's what you should do.
Yeah, sure.
Sandbo, so sand body stays in. Dump truck and sand body stay in, and then mower and cherry.
And the lift truck.
Bucket. Bucket, yeah.
Go into the. Twenty-five, yeah.
Was into that. Some reason it leaves it white.
We.
Oh, yes.
Right, go of the one eighty and thirty-two for the DPW. Okay, let's keep going down.
So, okay, so now we're, that's the DPW, next thing for this year, replacement hose, not a big problem, and I thought he said he. Actually, I thought he said he got, um. Some. That.
Oh.
But anyway, we, fifteen Ks and I'll be good. I think.
Cruiser, so this one.
It's, it's an important investment, right?
Yeah, if I, oh, I'm not arguing with it, yeah.
I think the cruiser should be one. I think we change, yeah, FY twenty-four and FY twenty-seven to one, uh, sixty thousand. One cruiser per year.
Brian did when he presented.
But I don't know.
Just make a note in the column.
But we're not sure doing it. With one funded.
Okay.
Currently grant funded or something.
Okay, Aubrey, did you get the, got the one twenty on the cruiser on line thirty-eight to sixty?
Oh, you wanna change to sixty?
Yeah, make it sixty and, right.
And they just put a note.
Oh, you did it already. Yeah.
Cause I knew.
You knew.
One cruiser, yeah, down.
Everybody did.
One cruiser, yeah.
Okay. Okay, up T.
Firearms, I tell them we'd have to leave and then.
Well, that's, that's way further, that's several years away.
No, oh, I see, you're right, I was.
Yeah, we did that this year, we just got those firearms.
So then we're at town hall, the IT upgrades.
Yeah, we definitely need some IT upgrades.
Ryan thought that the fifty was heavy, Aubrey, what's your?
Um, it depends on what it's including, right, Nathan?
Yeah, I don't think fifty's heavy.
Okay, so you like.
All right. Okay, so that is the end of FY twenty-four.
I don't know, have we made the CPS adjustments? I don't know that Aubrey made the. Well, please, Aubrey to the top.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't actually make some of those adjustments.
Although it was the cameras we were talking about.
Well, the one forty, it goes to zero if it's ARPA, right?
Oh, I see, we should take those off, one, the.
You should note, yeah, just put zero for now, just.
Yeah, he'll have the other version, so.
Right.
And the row.
Zero for that.
He's never gonna leave a meeting again.
Yeah, right. Getting rid of everything. Security cameras we need.
Said no to.
Yep, and then the fridge and freezer that we leave, right?
We said we'll do the fridge and freezer cameras.
WTP. Plow truck.
Okay, so then we got plow, move those.
Like, we didn't move server, I'm not sure. Remove the server AC.
I wanna know more about what the problem is before we.
Obviously having a problem.
On which part?
On the server room AC.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want server zero, right?
Yeah, but if you know zero, but. Don't, does someone wants to have a placeholder for next year?
Right.
They're, they're gonna.
Well, they're moving these things, well.
They could, well.
I mean, DPW has plow trucks.
Medical.
They'll present it next year.
And they'll find the money for it.
No, I'm talking about the plow truck, the.
Oh, the truck, oh, yeah, sorry.
Things if they.
The school, right.
Oh, oh, the plow truck for the school.
For the school.
I, that's a no.
Truck is the question.
But if it's a no, would it, you're right, but.
So there should be a note to the right that says.
Doing its job, right?
It, it, well, the note should say, um, can the DPW handle the plowing?
Yeah.
I don't know what it's for, and, and there was a question that came up from a citizen at one point about, we're plowing.
Fifty K.
Church, churches?
Taking it out.
So tell them the.
But not, but not the school.
Yeah, plow the playground before you plow the truck. So I think you can take it out.
So I, I think. So my, my feeling about the plow truck is. They have one, it looks like it needs work.
Yeah.
They need to justify it to us, we're not gonna fund it this year.
Right.
Right.
I think. The other one is the, the server room, and, you know, normally what we, what we do is they come before us and they talk about it before we start cutting things and adding things. Right?
Yeah.
I think we need them to, like, you know, they've come to us and justified tractor replacements, this is just a cut at it, right, we haven't heard their justification. That's a good point.
Right.
For eliminate.
Although I think they've done some of that with FinCom.
Yeah, but.
No, they actually have to decide.
Yeah.
They actually, no, but I mean, I, I agree with, um, Nathan, they have not. Apparently done much on the capital side of things.
Yeah.
Right.
A- and, and we need to hear it too, we, you know, we always hear it all, they always present it to us.
All right, so make that zero for now and let's see what.
Say it that way, Barney, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Let's see what the total is.
All right.
Not the way you think. So now I've got, uh, what do I have?
That's, yeah.
Four fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's so bad.
I think that's pretty good, so let me, let me go over my getting again. The. Free cash started at one point four. Two hundred thousand went to OpEx, leaves you one point two. Two hundred fifty thousand went to warrant articles, that leaves you at nine hundred and fifty thousand. Four hundred and fifty, I'm gonna call it. Goes to this, this curated capitalist if this becomes the list, that leaves you, you exit the year with five hundred thousand of free cash. Ryan believes that we generate free cash at the rate of about four hundred thousand a year. So this time next year, if we did all these things and everything worked out. We start the year with nine hundred thousand, again, that's above our.
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent floor, right?
Right.
So now you have nine hundred thousand, and as you can see, and we'll set aside. Next year's doesn't have the big step increase with CCHS, so presumably we're not using free cash on the operating side.
Right.
Warrant articles, who knows, I'm just gonna skip that. And now, let's, we're here now, a year from now, and we're looking at this million six or something. With nine hundred thousand.
Well, I understand.
I'm just saying.
Fire, yeah.
Nine hundred thousand. To play with.
Right.
I just want us to.
Minus the next year's peak that we're expecting.
No, the.
Two years.
No, no, he's right, well, two years, it depends when you.
So the question is, do we put some of it in stabilization? Just to ensure.
I think you live to fight this year, but, yeah, right.
So that it doesn't, it, you know, look like we have a lot of.
Now, there are, Aubrey, can you scroll up, I'm twenty-five, I just wanna point out that there are, I believe, in twenty, there's some things that would be debt funded, right, there's a big, like, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, the.
That number should go away, cause that would be debt, so.
Yes, yeah.
Right, so if, the purpose of now, just make it zero.
Eight hundred thousand dollar fire. Eight fifty, right? Eight years, okay.
No, but it's, it's, it'll be debt funded.
Okay, that's this year, it's not, and it's next year.
And I don't know what else, you wanna just scroll up again, just to take a quick look at whatever else?
You took it.
We sense of our caches, right?
Oh, okay, because you want only to have what we're doing with free cash on here?
Yeah, I want us to sense our use of.
This is a capital plan, and it should show you everything, yeah.
I know, but he, I think he's just temporarily, I'm just, I'm just. Don't go too fast, then, okay. Okay, so we got another dump truck, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, and then some other stuff, okay, keep going. Yes.
Yeah, that's.
I don't really have a way to create this too well, but.
That's a big year, that one.
But it's a big year, so let's just play the, let's just play out the, the game here for a minute.
Yeah.
Elevator and town hall, maybe that's our, so make zero.
Pickleball courts there.
Oh, pickleball is, pickleball is another year.
Is that, wait, wait, geez.
Pickleball will be CPA.
Well, that's, oh, because you took the ARPA.
You can make the pickleball zero as well, cause that's CPA.
Well.
You could note that.
I don't think we should be messing with future.
Well, it's only a thought, actually, come on.
My version, my peers.
It's not dang it.
Okay. Good, good, good.
All right, so again, we start twenty-five with nine hundred thousand. I don't know if we're allocating any reserve like Nathan said, but. And you have six hundred, I mean, it's, it's okay, actually, with me, I think what this tells me is our little. You know, pad of one point four million, if we're careful, I think we can stretch it. Probably fiscal twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, and fiscal twenty-six. Again, we're gonna replenish some of it, right?
Mm-hmm.
And manage some version of this capitalist, and that was kind of my main thing when I was. I know arguing is too strong a word, but when I was debating with Ryan at the last meeting, that you can't. Make these capital decisions in a single year, with a single-year window, cause you don't know what's coming down the bike. This tells me at least that. For the next three years. You know, with some changes, of course, we could probably manage our cash, use free cash.
I'll tell you the one that's a little bit, that's scary, is fiscal twenty-seven.
Fiscal twenty-seven is scary, because we're gonna have that same three, four hundred thousand.
And, and we have a bump, this is capital, and we have a bump at the school.
Right, you gotta look at that, I, we didn't, we didn't.
So that's where I do think we do need stabilization, because we might need to be doing some. Yeah, I definitely.
I think in twenty-seven, we would be taking a much closer look at these.
Well, I would say.
I agree, but the thing.
Dream right now.
But, but, um, Kate.
The thing is.
Kate, the, uh, the HVAC in there is six hundred thousand, in that. Nine ninety, six hundred thousand of it is an HVAC upgrade for the school, which is beyond the ARPA year, but it would be. I'm presuming, you start getting into those numbers.
Yeah, well, that, but that's.
Back work every year.
What's that?
Yeah, they ask.
They ask HVAC work every single year, right?
So.
They wanted three hundred thousand for the Wilkins this year.
Right.
And so doing it for a hundred and ten, so I don't know where that six hundred thousand comes.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, just. I just wanna summarize what I think that we've just done, okay?
Yes.
So we've gone through our operating budget, and we've kind of done a pretty good spitball on what we think should be in it. We figured out how we will pay for part of the. Uh, increase in our assessment for the school, through the stable, through the free ca- uh, free cash, yeah. We've gone and done kind of a pretty good spitball on the warrant articles, what we would support and what we wouldn't. And how it would be funded, and on the capital expenses. However, this is not what we're agreeing to, we're not gonna, because we still need to hear the justifications from everybody. And there may be something that we cut that we wanna do. And there may be some, something that we don't wanna do after they've talked about it. That's, that's where I think we are, right? Yeah. Did we have a full conversation on the deficit analysis of the other items, though? I mean, we went through each one and discussed, but I guess have we talked about how we're funding those? The which, which ones, the three percent, the? Yeah, the.
Yes.
So I think, I think what I propose. We've all. Decided what we're doing, or haven't decided if it's three percent or not, but we've decided that that's. Close enough for us to keep talking about it, we didn't reject anything. And we said that that would go into the operating expense, and we would offset that because the peak for the seat, for, for the school, we would pay for that out of the free cash. But we haven't agreed to any of those things yet.
Yeah, but that keeps the.
We can.
Rate increase at around three point. One percent.
Are you saying that because there's things there that you might not support? Well, I don't know, I mean, I, I keep, I go, come back to how we're gonna pay for all these. Right. And I.
Well, that's what I, we were kinda laying out, right?
So I, I think what we've done, I, I, I feel like what we've done is we've said, okay, here's what we're thinking, and you rerun all these numbers for us, so that we can see where it lands.
Right.
And then we may have to go back and say, we're gonna change this number, we're gonna, we're gonna change this.
And, and, and it seems to me that we do that with FinCom on the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
Right, we have a.
Right.
Well, I think we should.
Discussion.
Ryan, we should, these comments come back to them, so they can.
Right, they see it beforehand.
And then we come together.
I don't know that they're meeting again, but maybe they are, maybe they're gonna be next week, but, um.
See a big question mark over your head. Where Travis has had Travis. Yeah, I, I mean, because, I mean, we're trying to work all this in, and we're trying to do, say yes to everybody, and we really have, I mean, we've cut out a few things out of the capital budget and stuff, but we're really. I don't know, I, I just, I feel like that cash has to come from somewhere, it's not free, this, this is just.
Well, I mean, but that's, okay, so.
It, it, and I know we're talking about, well, we're, we're kind of evening it out over years, and, and we're gonna.
No, I mean. We have an operating budget that presumably FinCom and the departments and Ryan and everybody that's curated, right?
Right.
You delving into that, the level service.
No.
Okay.
No, he's talking about the things beyond the guidance.
Okay, now we get this bucket, so I'm with you, if you, there's things you're not. Comfortable with, I mean, for me personally. I'm not sure that we need to do the wage, I'm not convinced, I think, to my view is. COLA definitely, insurance, I believe, is important optically for workforce. And the COHS. And I'm not convinced completely that if we're really being tight. That wage, the wage adjustments need to be this year, in the year that we have all these other things going on.
Mm-hmm.
And the sustainability coordinator. You know. I'm, I'm retorn, because honestly, I believe we need to actually make. You know, be consistent with the wishes of what we heard the town say, that you need to start being sustainable, but it is staff free.
Right.
And anytime you add staff. You know, you're adding to the. I'm certainly not in favor of using ARPA funds for the. So, yeah, I mean, I'm with you, so I think we need to.
Oh, we need more information, then.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if they need more information.
You know, we, we.
Need to reach a consensus.
We talked about this at the beginning of the meeting tonight, we went through those items. That are listed under deficit analysis, which is kind of weird, right, but these outside the guidance requests. And I thought we had agreed we would, in principle. Support these, we wanted to try to figure out then how you would pay for them, and then we went through this exercise, which involves. Taking. Some of the free cash that we have. Um, above what we think is a more than conservative.
Yeah.
Line of twelve percent, right, we're saying we wanna make sure we have.
Right.
Twelve percent, and we've got a significant amount of money above that in free cash. So. We've gone through an exercise to look at how we might. Pay for. The, i- i- including these items, except the clerk stipend, in the, in the operating budget. And the free cash we've identified would be paying for the part of the operating budget that is that three hundred thousand dollar increase. But it, I mean, it's, um, what's the right word, it's.
Half, that's actually.
It's, 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 you're, however you wanna apply the, the free cash, whether it's to the increase in the regional assessment, or it's to these. Additions. You know, is, is somewhat semantics, right? Because it's, we're, we're basically taking free cash to fund some things.
Some other priorities.
Some other priorities, right?
Right.
And so. We figured out a way that we could pay for this. And, and so if, if we're back to discussing whether we think we need to, whether this would be a, these are useful, important things to have as what we're offering as a town. Let's go back and have that conversation, I think that figuring out how to pay for it, we've come up with a way to do that, right, and FinCom can further.
Right.
You know. Number crunch and the finance committee, the team can too, but, so it's, if we're back to, do we support these as a, as, as priorities for the services we want the town to be offering? Let's, let's go back and have that conversation, but we, we'd have gone through the exercise to figure out how we could do that from a money standpoint.
Right. I, I'm, I'm agreement, and I followed this whole thing, I'm being part of this, I'm just, I'm back to that point, Barney, where I'm saying. Everyone's just assumed, okay, well, we can, we know now we can pay for it, let's go, and I thought, but you, I, maybe I jumped the gun, we're gonna have that discussion.
Well, let, I guess the question is. Now that we've done this, let's go back and look at these, are these all, are we. In agreement? That we want to have these included in the operating budget? And I thought we had, if it, if it's the, I mean, I hear David raising wage analysis now is one of them, and I know sustainability, if. If, are we, I thought we had concluded that COLA at three percent and the one percent for the health insurance. Increase, knowing that we'd continue that beyond the first year, that we were in agreement on that.
I think, I think from, from my perspective, we, we agreed to them in principle, and then we'll go back, which is what you guys said.
Right.
I, I don't think that we ever said.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so let's, all right, so let's.
Is this. That's what I brought up, I was, I was concerned that we were all in, and we were like, okay, we got, we're gonna pay for it, and we're all moving forward, and I was just saying, I. Going to breaks on it, just saying. The bad guy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your shoulders.
Let me be the bad guy. Um. Three percent. Okay, if you dropped the two sixes and the one point seven five. On average, it's really around two point seven five percent, or maybe even a little bit lower. Us, we're, we're doing. Us, we're doing the one percent in the next year. Um, so I just wanna put it out there, I'm not saying I actually, I'm not saying I don't support three percent, okay, um, but. It's a big number, and particularly considering what we were seeing the other towns doing, yes, the average. Was about three percent, but there were some outliers that were really throwing that number off. You know. Six percent is huge, right, so. I just wanted, I'll just put that out there.
So we, let's just focus on that one then, for now.
I could support two point seven five.
I mean, I'd love to see that spreadsheet again, but I, I think that it, it went to, it went to one point seven, I mean, two point seven. Something.
Three or something, yeah.
Uh, cutting out one of the sixes and the one point seven five.
Okay, so, well, let's just.
Okay, I, I wanna say one clarifying thing, though, when you say adding the one percent, but just remember. That's not gonna go into effect in terms of people's pockets until FY twenty-five.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, so the impact on next year's budget would be. Um, just the three percent, FY twenty-four budget.
Every, every percent is.
Correct.
In today's payroll, every percent is fifty-six thousand. So a quarter of a percent cut is fourteen thousand.
I, that's.
So I mean, sure. Sure, but it's little, I mean, I.
And I also.
I just want us to be.
I, I feel, given this, where, where we are in terms of the, the country and, and Massachusetts and inflation. If we can afford to do it, I, I think the COLA is the most equitable way, right, to, to provide people with some additional.
Well, in the past.
Lines start with a.
The most equitable way.
Most of those lines start with the, the number two.
Yeah.
Right, I get it.
Because the people that make more money get more money, because it's a percentage. So the higher paid people.
That was always the Alan Lewis thing, give everybody a flat.
Which is why I'm so much in favor of the wage analysis.
Yeah.
So.
And changing, yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry that Ryan isn't here, I might even say, what if, you know, what if we gave. A two point five percent COLA to everybody, but we put the one percent in steps, gave everybody their, did the one percent.
Is that seventy-nine?
They probably would, okay.
Seventy-nine does not include a one percent.
Whatever, I don't know.
Goes into.
Well, right.
So they wouldn't see that.
So we could, you're right, that's another way to think about it, we go, do the. Even without the evaluation process, right, we give everybody at the beginning of FY twenty-four that one percent, they, they get the one percent bump in their salary.
Now, everybody has the one percent, only the people that wouldn't, weren't going to get their steps. Uh, this year, so they were, there's a quarter of the people, was it, what are the people, were gonna get their step this year? And three quarters of the people don't get the step, or was it the other way around?
I thought he said.
A quarter of the people are getting a step, so three quarter of the people are only gonna get COLA. And, or, and they might get.
Eventually some wage.
Actually, yes, but some.
For the middle level.
Only get COLA.
Right.
Which is, I'm, I'm kind of wishing that we did have the step already this year. And, and I would reduce the COLA to balance, you know.
You can do that. I mean, we can, we can call it a step, but really is it substantively different?
That's why.
How is it different?
I don't know. Look at all these things individually because another thing that I wanted to bring up was we are coming into a period of time when we know we're going to be needing higher people.
Right.
We need to be an attractive town for that hiring.
Right.
And I'm wondering if there's things that we can change here, levers that we can change here that would allow us to increase that insurance number. I, because that's, that's when you're, when you're taking a job.
Right.
Right.
That's a big thing.
I, I would almost ask our administrators what they think as far as the best levers, because they're the people on the front line.
They're the ones that started working.
I have to say, when I was looking at the school bumps, I was thinking, gee, on some of those years, we should maybe be raising the insurance two percent those years because we're not paying it in the school. You know, or, you know, it shouldn't necessarily just be one percent every year. Some years, maybe we could do a two percent and we'd be done sooner and we'd have a better.
Or maybe this year we do it two percent.
Or maybe this year we do a two percent. And then we don't give, you know. Yeah.
We're second guessing, right?
I know. I, I was, I thought that the wage analysis kind of, Ryan did mention there would be some internal savings relative to time and, and kind of getting us on the right path. You don't think so?
It's going to be minimal.
Minimal. Alright.
Oh, I don't know.
What do you think?
So I will say, you know, we are losing a staff person to, you know, more pay and benefits. Um, and I think there is something to be said about, you know, having to train people, you know, when they leave for somewhere with better pay and benefits and having to start that all over again. Um, and that, that's not a metric that, you know, I'm not, I'm, I can calculate right now, but you know, it's out there. And that has to be considered as well, how much time that takes.
We don't want, right, I mean, the brother. That's the, that's the wage.
The wage.
Right.
The wage and the benefits, your point, the benefits as well.
Right.
Right? And, and the, I mean, listen, I'm, I run the same thing in my own business. It's a, it's a war for talent and retention is important. So I'm all in favor of things that will help retention.
Yeah.
And that's why I believe health insurance, whether we do the one now and later, or we do more of it now, I think we have to get ourselves to market. We got to get to market. My personal feeling, but I have no data, is that if you promise and you honor the promise, that most of the people will say, okay, I can see the path and I'm, I'm willing to, you know, write it up. Whether that helps us in a recruitment, I, I can't answer. Better to have a burden.
That helps us.
The people who are here, I think.
Might help keep them here.
Might help keep them here. I think COLA is really important. I think everybody faces the gas pump and the eggs and the who knows what, and they feel it and they want to see it, even if it's small money. They want to see it in their paycheck. They don't, nobody wants to feel like they're losing ground. Because that means you're actually earning less. So to me, that's really important, even though it's expensive. And the other stuff, driver doesn't count, but I mean, the two big ticket items there, I just can't make as compelling a, like an emotional argument.
Okay, the two big ticket items are?
The remaining ones are the wage analysis at eighty and the.
Yeah, but and talk about not only retention, but hiring, we won't, can't hire if we don't do the, do that.
So go for it.
The wage change.
Yeah. You can't do one of that, not the other.
Okay. Alright, fair enough.
So I think the only outstanding one is sustainability. At the beginning of this year, we, this board got together and we did goal setting.
Right.
We looked at the master plan. Seems to me, um, that sustainability was on the top of the list. We set up a whole brand new committee and we said, give us a work plan.
Right.
And they gave us a work plan that requires some
Somebody to do.
Staff time because generating reports and stuff like that. But we, I don't, I think we now have, we're at the point where we have to put our money where our mouth is.
Let me ask, let me ask a question about that. So actually I have two questions. Let me ask them both. One would be, can this be grant funded? And the second is we are paying for somebody now. What did we get out of that? What, what did we get out of the investment that we made this year? And I think we paid for somebody several years ago. What, what did we get? Or maybe it was just a grants person.
Yeah, but anyway, it was somebody for the energy committee.
Yeah.
Uh, well, what we got from the energy committee one was several grants and we've got streetlights and a number of other things.
No, that was all done with volunteers.
Yeah, that was.
We didn't have any staff that did the green communities work.
Yeah.
I thought. That's the energy task force.
Force.
Yeah. Did all of that.
But they wrote grants to get.
Oh, yeah, they, and they.
At least I can, I can answer.
That's why that committee eventually dissolved because they burned out. And then the few that were remaining, there was a real conflict between some of the members. So.
I'm not sure a grant will fund the position, but the position will get green. So there will be an offset. We don't know what it is, but my understanding, right, is that is part of the job role will be to write these grants.
Absolutely. It's in there. Yes.
So I think ideally that person would pay for him or herself over something. But right now we have to make a commitment. So on the second part of the question, we shared a resource with Westford. And I think the feeling is, I, I'll speak for Ryan since I'm here, that rather have a staff person that's here, that works for our town planner and therefore the planning board. And does the things we specifically need doing. And I think you had a conversation with Madeline that sort of supports that.
Yeah.
What did we get out of this town? Is this the person we hired?
The public.
And how, how is this going to be, how are we going to manage this differently?
Because it's our own resource.
And because we're talking about a job description that's really defined.
I think it was actually just, I'm just thinking, just remember, I think that we shared somebody with Concord at one point.
Yes, that's the person that we shared and we, and.
They wrote grants.
They did write grants and as, as I recall, we've got a lot of money in for things that we wanted to.
A good grant writer ought to be able to pay for.
But again, you can't count on that.
But you can't count on.
And that's not the sole purpose of that particular.
No, it's.
No, it's.
Right. Thing is though, that is that it's not just the feature of this particular committee. This would be somebody who's working in town, who is helping um, to promulgate the goal of sustainability. All the town.
Build it into the DNA.
Departments. And you need to have somebody to hear the daytime, during daytime government.
Right.
To get that job done. You can't do that.
Well, an example, I mean, a very small example, but an example is, you know, what's going to happen with the Green Al Barn program is Ryan, the highest paid guy in the building, is going to spend time researching quotes on how to, you know, and that little kind of job would not be, that would be done by, everything we do, you turn it over to the sustainability person and say, please.
And but I think he's doing, he's getting a quote and he said, I'll just get it in, in that quote. I, I mean, with the MFC, we take into a consideration those environmental sustainability goals. And so we've already made allocations, dollar value allocations of eight thousand dollars more on a, on, you know, things that are environmentally sustainable. So I think that it's starting to get baked in, in the ethos of these committees anyway. And I, I just, you know, here we talked about it tonight with Reno. I mean, we, we all kind of are moving in that direction. So I just, and I, I look at this and I say, well, we've got all these goals. We've got, you know, environmental sustainability, which is important, but we've also got fiscal sustainability. And we've got, you know, Carlisle character and we, we think about all these and we've got to assess what's really important.
Right.
See if there were any grants to cover that extra thousand, eight thousand dollars extra expense, because I bet you there's grant money out there.
Well, we want just a grant writer and then have a generic grant writer. I mean, is, is that what?
I mean, for instance, you know, one of the things that Madeline pointed out to me was that things we, we get, we get state mandates or we get state policies or even new legislation. And trying to understand what it is that we're required to do with that now. She said, they, you know, they don't have the capacity on the planning board to, they, they just don't have the ability to read those things and be able to understand what's required or what changes are happening and how it affects a place like Carlisle. Or if, for instance, if proposals are going to be made around zoning changes that have to do with sustainability. Is the zoning board of appeals gonna have a volunteer, you know, one of the members, figure out the, the impact of that and how, what it would mean to implement some change? Or, you know, there, and there are numerous other things that, that I don't, I don't know what they are, but to, to change the way we operate as a town and then also to change how residents operate is, is the point of having that resource available in town hall, I think, in a way that we don't have it now. And we can ask different staff people to do those individual things. But it takes away from what they were more, their primary job. So.
I think it's also part of.
Yeah. Yeah. I want to go back to just what did we get of this? I think that's a hard conversation to have.
Yeah.
Publicly.
Right.
And.
Check the disciplines.
I, yeah. Right now, uh, uh, Kevin Bentley's here.
Well, I think Mary Lynn's still on and she.
Uh, Sue Thomas is no longer on.
And, oh. So what we, the, the grant position and the work and the, and the way that it's both sharing it with another town was difficult. The supervision and the, and the um, setting a work plan for that position was very difficult and not very functional.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, I think I guess the way I, the way I feel about where we are right now is we've gotten a pretty good idea on like what we want to do. There's still some levers that we can push and pull in order to maybe pull some things out. And so, and, and I think that we also need a lot more input, you know, not necessarily on this particular role or something else, but certainly on all those capital items and things like that. That's clear. And, uh, and then I think we just need to think long and hard about, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not saying I am against some of these things, but we're saying, you know, inflation and everything. Citizens, Carlisle also are facing the same inflation. And, you know, we need to really think hard about, you know, we said five hundred dollars on average. You know, let's look at these numbers and see, is there something else we can do? We've got, we have residents that their, their, you know, taxes just went up, was the number they were saying? Twenty five hundred dollars or something like that? And then this is going to be another, because those were all in the one million range. There's going to be another five hundred dollars that they hit with within a year. Um, and I just think that, you know, I, I, I think that we just really need to be, you know, again, I'm not saying, I don't think that we should fund these things. I would just like to really see the numbers and where we ended up with that increase and make sure that before I'm ready, willing to say we're going to do all these things, including some of the other things in the operating budget. I'd like to know where we have exactly ended up in impacting Carlisle residents on the taxes.
Right. But I guess I agree with it at the philosophical level, but again, I'll ask the same question I asked Travis. Do, do, do we as a board want to dive under the hood of the base level service budget that is going through this? Ryan Fincom plus, that's the first piece. That's the thirty something million dollar piece, right? Before we get.
Yes.
Do, is that what we want to do? Because I don't, I, we don't typically do that, right? We don't go line item by line item.
Typically we do with FinCom. Right? We, we, we have always gone.
But we didn't, we do some of that.
Well, we did it with the. You did not um, join that FinCom meeting, you know, it was on a Monday night.
Yep.
And that's where they, Lynn did that. And that's where we, um, we could ask questions if we wanted to.
But typically in the select board meeting, we also do it because it's the select board public meeting.
Well, it was a joint meeting. We can do it again, but it was a joint meeting. We spent a couple hours doing it.
Yeah, that was, that was optional for select board members. So I think.
Yeah.
I think.
Yep.
Right.
So we can do that again.
I'm not, I'm not questioning everything that is.
Well, let's remember, we, we have the opportunity to do this with the FinCom on the twenty eighth. And that's only, and that is not the end of it, right? We, we will see where we come out on that. And in March, ideally we have something.
Right. But I want to understand, I guess.
You want to understand.
Well, from a philosoph, you know, at a high level, what I'm hearing, and I don't, and I agree with it at philosophy. So now I'm sort of at action. If we say, probably not a bad thing, you know, a bunch of people got a big tax increase. And we, and everybody's sort of super sensitive. And maybe five hundred is not the number, maybe zero is the number or two fifty is the number. But you can't have an infinite number of variables. You'll never get anywhere. So if we, if we were to lock on what we thought was, you know, a reasonable increase for the million dollar average property. Some are going to be deck houses and everything, some aren't, you know, we can't solve all that. And we also say, how much free cash are we comfortable using? For operating expenses based on the facts of the assessment. We have a window of free, and then those line items eight through twelve. You know, are they nice to haves or are they must haves, right? I mean, yes, there may be some nips and tucks we can do on the base level service budget, but it won't be much. Right? It won't be much. So I, I, I don't think we should leave just saying, well, we'll look at the data. Because we have a lot of the data. We ought to get a consensus of where we, where we think we are. I mean, I'm hearing.
I agree because the finance committee is asking for that. They want our guidance. What are the priorities? And this is kind of the clear cut, this is where you have to make decisions and say.
It might be, you know, fifty or a hundred K somewhere in the operating, in the base budget that we have it uncovered. But we kind of think on that.
In fact, I think, no, I think Ryan took some of that out of that.
He did do. That's what he just scrubbed out.
Expensives. Yes.
He did scrub out, right?
Scrubbed.
Back to, I just would like to get the sense of, let's start with the first thing. What, what average tax increase are we comfortable with? We started by saying five hundred, but, or three percent, but.
Right.
Is it three percent or it should be less? Like to know, you know, what do people think?
I, I'm comfortable at the three percent because I think that there's, you know, I, just personally philosophically, I'm, I really want to make sure we pay attention to people's tax bills.
And I, that's probably the top priority.
And I really think that's important. So, but I think there's some reasonable increase every year because there's just inflation and we've inflated much more than three percent.
Right.
And I think that, you know, we can manage to a three percent and I would feel comfortable.
And I agree.
With that.
I agree with three percent.
I agree with three percent.
Okay.
I think that that is the absolute highest.
So that's important.
You're saying.
Important thing for us to tell FinCom.
Right.
No more than three percent. So that's, so now given three percent, which is the math we've worked on. And given that we we would need to, can you go, Aubrey to the which, I, I think it's the TA budget.
TA budget notes twelve to thirteen?
Yeah, the, the very last.
Or one to twenty three.
TA budget, yeah, the TA budget notes, maybe that's where we are, right? That's where we are.
Yeah, that's where I'm on.
Yeah.
Go down a little. So.
Okay.
There we go.
Is that the one?
What are you looking for?
I'm trying to reconcile. So three percent without these ads, if we took the cuts but not the ads, we make the three percent. Without any free cash.
Oh, in fact, we make less than three percent.
Yeah, right.
Right. Okay.
Right.
So we have room for a hundred thousand.
Right. We, we, in fact.
I think we have room for about a hundred thousand of, of, and that's with that, right?
Yes. But you, but that's not even including, not including free cash.
We're back to the five things.
We're one eighty three two.
And that's what I.
So let's just prioritize them. Everybody should give their priority.
Do we know what's in the three hundred and seventy five thousand, the three percent increase for the schools?
Oh.
They've given us a preliminary budget, I think.
Yeah.
Was that, was that in that? In Congress? I thought it was higher than three percent. I thought it was like three point something.
Three point, well, this is three point oh two for CPS and eight point six six for CCR eight.
Right. Yeah, but that eight point six is hard to tell because it's not the budget, it's our portion of the budget. You know, so, but the, uh, for the schools, the CPS budget, um, there were a couple of new positions, support positions.
Just three.
Three new positions. Well, that will give you the three.
That's based on the, yeah, the population that it's currently at the school and, and, or, or one of them, I think, is an incoming student. Right. Yeah.
I mean, three is historically in line with where they are usually, right?
Three percent. They were higher before, but you know, when it started. Yeah.
Right. So.
They were higher.
I mean, three percent. And by the way, if we flat, if we flat, flattened every line item, like didn't add those things and still came in with a COLA of three percent. I mean, it's not all wages, but you know.
Well, okay, I, I really think we need to.
Yep.
You know.
We have to come.
As they say, you know what, or get off the pot.
So what do you want? You want.
Yes, there you go.
I mean, I.
Well. Well, so maybe we, it, um, we could either do rank order, we could see what we're all agreed on and then go down. And then we could take that and say, we want to see what it looks like if we did the, it with these items included, or this larger set of items included, or the, all of them included. You know what I mean? We could see the impact with these other changes that we've made and take a look at that. Have, have Ryan or Kim or whomever prepare that for us and so we can see it next week.
How would it be different than what we're looking at? I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you say, if you give guidance, no more than three percent tax increase.
Correct.
No more than, I'm just making it up. No more than two hundred thousand of free cash use for operating expenses. And, um, what was the third thing? The third thing would be,
Uh, well.
We support some, you know, maybe a rank ordering of these things and let them sort of.
Well, with this, well, but this is covered by two hundred thousand dollars of free cash.
Okay, then.
Yeah. So, but, um, so let me go to the one that we seem to be having most discussed, sustainability, that position. Let's just do a show of hands. Okay, straw poll on that one. Do you support the town uh, creating that position in the FY twenty four budget? Raise your hand if you do.
I want to have the conversation with FinCom. I, I'm, I'm still where I was before, where let's put this in there. I, I'm, I'm still where I was before, where, let's put this in there. And let's see what, see how it looks without us just cutting in.
Okay.
Things.
Yeah.
And, and have the new final thing and then hear from Fincom. You know, their opinion on what this means, but also hear more about.
They are looking, in order to do that.
To be the guide, so they've asked that, Scott, and we're giving them.
Okay, so you're saying, so Nathan, you're suggesting we put these, put these in to show that we are.
Preliminary.
We're considering uh, including these in the operating budget. We, and we have that present, our, that presented, get the numbers for that. But then we go into the discussion with the Fincom with the idea of, we wanna hear. Where they are, we wanna look at the operating budget items that might be worth, you know, spending a little time on. And then where do they come, where do they come down on these positions? But again, as, as Travis is saying. They don't, they don't wanna be setting policy, right? They want us to be saying what we.
Correct.
What we would like to have.
We should straw poll our feeling like. And give them that influence. What I'm hearing is there's no, that we have a hundred percent support for line twenty-five drivers, right?
The easy one, yeah.
And stipend if we need it, I guess.
But that's gone if we do the wage.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think I heard a hundred percent for at least the one percent health insurance, maybe even more, but.
Is that fair to say?
Board with that? I'm on board with that.
Okay. And then the.
I don't know whether we're, what are we recommending, two and a half or three?
Well, again.
Then you're into the, how much the percentage.
Are we in favor of a cola?
Yes.
Okay. A cola, not to exceed three percent.
Right.
And the wage change then.
Right. Wage analysis, it sounds like everybody seems to be in favor of that, if anybody not in favor of that. I'm backing off, I'm saying.
Now, yeah, I, I mean, if you're managing to a budget, you gotta make some cuts, I mean, we're all saying, oh, this is great, we're, we're saying yes to everything, so.
We did make cuts, above here are the cuts.
And I'm reserving the right for more cuts after we see it.
Of course, we still will.
But you're okay.
Know it's two and a half percent.
I'm here, I'm gonna be the person.
Okay, but you're com, we're comfortable including wage analysis.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with, I, I wanna, yes.
You wanna see all of these things included in a.
In a budget.
In a budget. Then we are agreeing, though, is still up for discussion.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I, I recommend sustainability pushing a year.
I do too.
Or permit. Say it's a permit, say it's a, it's a two-year position.
Well, that was, that was what Ryan, I'd see a thought about in, in.
Yeah, but that's.
Positioning ARPA, but, you know.
Well, so what would happen if we?
Cause you don't really term it.
Been here, where we've had that kind of a situation where you hire somebody with the idea that it's a two-year position. Now, it becomes very hard at the end of the two years. If, of, of course, you know, it would allow us to understand whether, what, what's the ability to get grant money? And it would also allow us to understand. Uh, what, what can that actually, what, what value does that position actually bring to the town?
But so if it's done with soft money, then you can do that. Because now it's a, it's a soft money position, you tell them it's a two-year position, it works out if they do a really great job and it can, um. There's a commitment, you know, depending upon how it goes, putting it in the budget.
Alright, so you would have to support it at the ARPA level, which.
But then we need to be.
Well, that's another case, that's.
No, I, um, I would say I was negative on it, because um, I don't want, I, I, I don't. When we started with ARPA, we tried to have a set of principles so that when people from outside of this group. Came, we had, we could say, well, these are the principles we're looking, we don't wanna do things that haven't been already vetted. Somewhere in the town, we don't want N runs around the Fincom, we don't want things that are going to cause um.
The increase.
Any increasing up for, you know, future operating budgets. But if it comes from this. Well, it's a different, it's a whole different kettle of fish, let's face it.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but I think we should also in our own minds say, do we really wanna spend ARPA funds?
You know, it'd be a hundred and thirty, whatever, a hundred and thirty thousand plus.
On something that might. Be more difficult, you know, you, well, it won't be difficult, you just say, you know, damn, the end of the two years, sorry, sayonara, you know. Or, but then if it was great, we have to then understand, we better find that money in two years from now.
And you were very against it coming at, doing a term.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I just think we, we have a lot of budget. Things that we wanna fund, and I look at this and just think, you know, I, I'd like to be able to navigate all these things. And like you said, it'd be great, I, 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 I intellectually support these things. But I also support trying to, you know, have a sustainable budget. And I just don't think that that position is gonna help at this period of time, and I don't think we're gonna get the value from it, that's.
Well, uh, on the other hand, though, we have a bunch of goals, and we did set up this committee, how do you propose that those, we make any progress on those goals?
We started, we're, we're, we started with the committee, I mean, that wasn't even in existence, we're, we're making progress. The committee's gonna do their outreach at the, you know, Earth Day this year, I mean, this is a process. And I don't, and we're trying to do everything at once, which is great, and we've got this huge plan, the master plan to do it. But this is where we have to figure out what are, what are taxpayers, what are people willing to fund? And I don't know, I, I'm just saying, I, I'm less inclined to do this at this period of time.
Are you comfortable though with putting, putting this in, having all of these items in a budget? For, to, to, for the conversation with Fincom, so entertaining. These items, including the sustainability position. To see what that looks like and see what the Fincom, what their, their take on it is. Um, reserving the right for the select board as a body to go back and decide, no, we don't wanna do this, that, or the other thing.
I think they were asking us for the judgment on this, of trying to figure out what are the priorities? And let the select board select those priorities, and I don't think going to them with this, the saying, oh. Because we've already figured out, if we wanna pay for these things, we can do it.
Right.
We can do it, we, we have the ability to do it, though it costs something, and, and so it's just, I think us, we should figure out whether we wanna do.
Yeah, so um, so you would put yourself down then as, as not supporting this position in this. In fiscal twenty-four. Right?
Yeah.
Funding this in fiscal twenty-four, however we, wherever the money came from. Yeah.
Generally, yeah, and, and I'm, I may be on that for some of the other things.
Yeah, I would, I would. Which other, we've sort of gone over this.
Well, like the, what, the cola, I mean, as far as adjusting the cola to figure out what's gonna be the, the most sustainable long term? I mean, I think we need to hit these head on and, you know, I'd love to give everything.
One year thing only.
What?
The cola's a one.
This year, right?
It is, but, but it's not like we're saying it's called three, three percent forever and ever, man, it's three percent this year.
I, I get it that we're collective body here and we gotta, you know, make, we gotta, we gotta make it work for everyone. And I'm just one voice here, so I'm willing to, you know, work through this, but you ask, you know, kind of, if I had to rank these. That the sustainability would be, you know, the least priority there on this year's budget. Of the extra things that we're trying to fund.
So should we just go through and do a rank order by person? Where we were four minutes ago? Did we?
Sure, let's move on, cause it's. We've been at this thing since six o'clock.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of that.
But see, I, I don't have a rank order, I'm, I'm not gonna say, this is my first choice, this is my, you know. Um, I actually believe since we've done the exercise to figure out how we would pay for it. And because I'm comfortable with what we've done in terms of making sure we're maintaining our free cash. At twelve percent, and in fact, we're not even, we're gonna be a little over that if, if our numbers are even, you know, fairly close to being accurate. I think all of these things are of real value, and I. I don't think we, uh, I don't wanna be conservative about our spending. For the sake of being conservative, or to being able to say, you know, we're um. That we. Were worried about spending too much. Um, maybe the wrong way of phrasing it, but to me, because we have. This abundance of free cash, which we are very fortunate as a town to have, there are very few other towns that have this kind of a situation. Um, I think all of these are very compelling. And, you know, three of them are really focused on our staff. And making sure that we can retain staff and we can uh, recruit staff. And I, I think those are all very important, um, and we should be doing them, we should do them. Uh, and with sustainability, I think. You know, for some of the things that Kate's articulated, um. We, we have, we have said this is a priori, priority, we've got a committee that's working really hard, they're not gonna be able to get. Very much of that work plan done without some significant support. And it's something I think as a municipality, we need to take seriously. And as we've been saying, put our, some of us saying, put our money where our mouth is on this. And um, so, my own position is. There, I, I don't want, I'd say all four of them should be funded. Boom, we put them in the operating budget and let's do it.
And then see what happens like some agents.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Alright, let's just do it.
No, I, I don't wanna, I mean, let's vote on that, if that's, that, I can, I don't, I should make that as a proposal, right, somebody else needs to, but. Or we could, I mean, straw vote, I think, maybe Travis, would you be supporting that or not? If that was a motion on the floor, that we put all four of these in, uh, and we say as a select word. We do want, we do support having these things, we wanna see what the money looks like.
Can I just say a counterstatement to what you just said?
Sure.
And, you know, not to be contrary, because in general, I do support all these things, I do wanna take a closer look, is it three or two point seven five or things like that? And I just want us to remember that the reason why we have a lot of free cash is because we have overtaxed. And because we have the free cash, doesn't mean we should spend it. And because we have found out that we can afford all these things, doesn't mean we should spend the money.
I completely agree with, I completely agree with that.
I agree with that too, I, I will point out, though, it's not, it's not all because we've overtaxed.
We have starved our stuff. We've, we've, we've taxed for things that we should have done and then didn't do.
Right, so on that note, I mean, I ran, I ran a little analysis.
Didn't mean we didn't tax, we got the money.
Also because we've overestimated, we've underestimated our revenues.
We have money to spend because we've been frugal, okay, however we got it.
But sometimes you can be penny wise.
It could have been lower, it could have been lower.
Yes, because we got more revenue elsewhere, from elsewhere, exactly, exactly.
But no, on the point that Kate just made, and so if we assume, okay, whether we overtaxed or we were prudent, or who knows, we're lucky. All those things are in play, and by the way, we've been very conservative here on chapter seventy. You brought up a great point, I don't know if there's any chapter ninety, you know, those things are gonna go up, new governor, blah, 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 so. We're probably still gonna be conservative in our assessments of how much free cash we generate. The extra free cash we have primarily. Because we did underspend, we underspent on capital maintenance, blah, blah, blah. We have a capital plan that's got, you know, some big ticket items in the future. We did, I think, a nice job tonight at sort of carrying that back, my own analysis on what we did. Suggests that this little, this pad of one point four million, again, assuming two hundred thousand this year for. This thing in two hundred thousand in three years, whatever, for that. It kinda lasts out through twenty-seven, and then at that point, if we do, the, the fidelity of the capital plan is not good at that. But that, you know, four years is pretty critical, right, we've identified, and, and this approach that we've taken. Including, by the way, spending on this. Does make that cash last. And I think that's a prudent use of it, it's, maybe we shouldn't have taxed it in the first place, but it's here. I totally agree with you, just cause it's here doesn't mean we gotta spend it all in a year, we know what's coming down the pipe, I think we're being prudent. Um, I will share that Ryan is upstairs and he said that the Fincom would like to apply more free cash to lowering the tax. So you know, we're, we're there coming.
Okay. Yeah.
So.
Um, the other thing also is that we get closer to, is it twenty-eight or twenty-seven that our debt goes down?
You know. Yeah, we gotta prep for that.
Well. When. We funded that.
Yeah.
Part of the sale of it was that, hey, in this year, our tax is gonna go down because we're going to be losing this debt, right? And so it's one of those things where we're just adding and adding and adding and adding. And just because we could drop the tax bill because of that, doesn't mean we shouldn't, right? So I, I'm just saying, I don't think that we should count on that as we're gonna be able to spend more than.
We can't, we can't count on that, it's gonna be off that by.
Careful then.
Right.
About, okay, just because we can do this, should we do it? Or should we actually cut back on the taxes?
You're talking about when our debt starts to shrink. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we know we're not gonna be able to.
That's great, but I, you know, I just don't, here's what we can say, here's what we can say.
Borrow without raising taxes.
Right.
Whether we should have deferred the police and the fire, probably we shouldn't have.
Right.
But we are where we are, and it just so happens that because we deferred. We are more or less level loading that kind of debt. It, it will come online just as the other one goes down.
Right.
Now, we weren't smart enough to plan it that way, and in fact, we're living the tough times where we're underfacilitized on both of them. But the reward is, we won't be really increasing.
Worked out perfectly, worked out perfectly.
But, but this is also why you keep stabilization funds, so that if you do for some reason have to do a big borrowing. You have that fund.
I think, I mean.
Great, I love it. Where the rubber beats the road for I.
That's why you're doing.
Why we were put in this role, right, if they have these discussions.
Yeah, and I don't remember having a discussion this step.
Where's, where's?
I took it out, we took it out.
Yeah, really.
Because.
Triple our salary.
Yes, no, I, yes.
Yeah, alright, so folks, let's, where are we?
So I think somebody.
Proposal on the table to just help Fincom.
If, if we are agreed on this, that we put all.
All the things on this page.
Except the, assume the clerk stipend is absorbed by the wage analysis, right, it goes in there. So there are those five things, and. We don't know exactly the percentage on the cola, we've got three percent in here, we may wanna adjust that. Right, right, okay. One percent on the health insurance, but.
Yes.
Right, we bank, right.
The information we just got from Ryan. Makes me think that I'm gonna wanna lower that percentage that I'm willing the taxes to go to. I think getting the habit of using free cash to offset operating to keep taxes low means we're spending too much money. So I was. We might have to come back.
To your point, at least sit on top of things.
But I wanna, but I wanna hear their reasoning.
Yeah, and it'll be probably what you said, it'll be a lot of what you said, right, there's poor people and they, and you know, and they got a big increase and. But I think for the first cut, we, I don't think we're gonna improve our position anymore than we've done.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of your proposal, and let's give it back to Fincom, let them.
Let them put the numbers in, we're not saying you figure it out.
Right, I totally do, totally.
And. Where that.
I, I'm only, I'm not, because I, again, Scott Triola came to our meeting and said, we need guidance on what. You guys are your priorities and what we should be kind of not focusing on and not funding. And we're just saying, oh, well, here it is, and we wanted you to focus on all of that and try and make it work, is at least in my simplified version.
I, I, I don't think that's what we're saying, I'm saying, we think that all of these are important, they should go into the budget. That um, the, uh, and that they should be funded in such a way that the tax. in such a way that the tax rate does not, um, exceed three percent, um, increase. And we can talk about three percent, point seven, five percent, whatever you want, percent. And that, and that's what drives the free cash. And that's what drives the free cash.
Right.
Discussion.
They all come, right. They will then have to come up with a free cash.
That's right.
Because by the way, we should say also, not, don't, don't fund it through our, don't fund it through the ambulance reserve fund.
Yes. A, and, and I think that's legitimate.
Cut somewhere else.
No, they have to use more free cash possibly.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that.
But that's not our purview. That honestly, the use of free cash is the FinCom's business, not our business. All we did tonight was we said, you know, we have enough free cash that can be done. They could decide not to, and they could then say, you know, we're really not comfortable using that much free cash. You need to cut something else. And then we go back. I mean, it's an iterative process. It's not.
Right.
This is my first time through. So, right, I don't know that.
This is a, that's a good thing, right? This is an iteration.
Yeah.
So can we, at nine fifteen, can we cap this, spend a few minutes on the HR?
Oh, get it eight.
Oh, my God.
Seven thirty. It was seven thirty?
No, we got to do the HR.
So, you know, I, I, I think I would say, I'm fine with this all going in there.
Yep.
But if, if they make a really strong argument, which I could totally agree with, that we need to get the tax number down.
Yep.
I'm not sure that I do support the sustainability person. I'm not sure that I do support three percent. Because I don't want those things paid
Right.
out of free cash.
Why not?
Um, because it's going to hurt us the next year, because now we have the role.
Well, that's right. He's right. He's totally right. He's totally right about that.
And so that. Have to reevaluate it if, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want them to have free cash.
But it's still a free cash discussion. You saved him.
We cut from the budget further.
Well, it's more than a free cash discussion. It's, 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 I agree with what Nathan's saying. It's, it's a, are we, are we serious about bending the curve of spending or aren't? Whether you have free cash or we suddenly have a windfall. If Governor Healy says, you know what, Carlisle, we love your school. Please take another five hundred thousand dollars in from chapter seventy. It still doesn't mean we shouldn't be leaning on our operating, and make our free cash a bit. But so it is, it's, it's a complex thing, and I agree with Nate. And, and, uh, but for the purpose of right now, this iteration, let them put it all in.
I, I just want to know why it's always on the town side that's getting cut and, you know, there's nobody else that's getting.
That's what I asked about the seat there.
So go back, go back at the school.
Right.
We, we, we. Wait a minute, we just, by the way, that, it's a small thing.
We took some stuff out of their capital request.
We pushed twenty K of what they wanted, and we said, go find them.
Right.
Okay, right, right.
We just did.
Back in for them.
Okay, but I mean.
Yeah.
That's peanuts.
We haven't looked.
Right.
I, I'm in the last year of my first, maybe my first term, but and I've been a longtime FinCom guy and a longtime school guy, so I should know it better. But my experience prior to this position has not been with select board. And I ran a lot of school budgets in my time. It was me and FinCom or my board, the two boards battling it out. And then select board more or less accepting that number after it been wirebrushed. I'm okay changing, but to me, it's a change in policy if we were to go back under the hood of the CPS.
Well, we, we're not allowed to legally.
The only thing we could say is three percent is too much.
Yes.
Right. You have two percent.
Yes.
And then they have to figure out.
And you found out what to cut.
Right.
Right.
Right. Okay, listen, I, I really want us to end this. Um, I don't think we're being.
Wants to go home too.
There's, I don't think there's anything new we're.
Yeah, okay.
We're coming up with, so.
Maybe changes.
We want to make this as a motion if we do. No. We want to just say our, what we, our guidance to FinCom is, all right, we've agreed that we want to say it's, um, three percent is the max increase in the tax, uh, bill. That we want to say, um, we would like all of these five items included in the operating budget. We have, we've made some changes in the, um, warrant and the cap, uh, capital expenses, which we want to give, uh, have that included.
Yes.
And.
And I thought we said, uh, no more than two hundred thousand out of free cash for the operating budget. And, and two hundred thousand for, no? And, and, and flat, okay. And no more than two hundred thousand for free cash for the operating budget. So if that, if those things don't fit.
And a tax increase of three percent.
And a tax increase of max.
Max. Max.
That's, that's our starting point.
That's our starting.
Starting.
Right.
Let's put that all in and then have a discussion because they're definitely thinking.
Okay.
We're not on agreement.
Aubrey, have you been able to capture this?
Yes.
Okay, good, because, all right, great.
What was that first thing we said?
Yeah, really. Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. That, and you've got the, um, three percent max on the tax bill.
Yeah, I have notes as well.
Yeah, okay. Good. Phew. Okay, guys. Listen, we gotta, we gotta clear our brains a little bit and give Aubrey the opportunity to tell us about this, um, bylaw change around personnel, um, which we have a copy of it from before, you know, in our packets. And, um, so Aubrey, um, David already knows where he stands. Um, but Aubrey, if you could just summarize.
Absolutely.
The issues, yeah, and, and then the recommendation.
Sure. So obviously, this was an initiative before I started here. Um, the, uh, government task force already started these recommendations. Um, so there are a few findings that, um, I wanted to point out and recommendations for a warrant article. So one of the findings is that Personnel Board, as of right now, is not very efficient. Um, I did a quick review. The last meeting they had was October twenty twenty-one. They had to cancel it because there wasn't enough forum. That was the last thing they had posted. It's really hard to find any real minutes for them either. Um, and then I also found in some meeting minutes from other boards that they were having a hard time getting a response for position approval. So, you know, that can really take a lot of time and, you know, we need decisions. That's not very helpful. And the task force also gave a lot of these findings that they interviewed staff members and found that it was not very efficient. And so they were having a hard time working with the Personnel Board. Uh, another thing that they found, and then I outlined in this, is, um, the different responsibilities is assigned, they're assigned to several different people, right? The Personnel Board, the Town Administrator, maybe the Select Board, sometimes it's the Personnel Administrator, which isn't very clear, is the Town Administrator. There's, there's, you know, one, one piece says it's an executive assess, the secretary appointed by a select board. Other parts say it is the Town Administrator, or it could be another person that's appointed, such as a position like myself. So it's very unclear. Um, so when it comes to negotiating bargaining agreements, administering, administering the personnel policies, maintaining the record system, any, the wage classification, managing the job descriptions, advertising, compliance, training. It's all across the board of who's in charge. So this does not make it clear when we have to make policy decisions, job description decisions. Um, it's, it's, it's just very, very murky and it's not very efficient. Um, and I think that, you know, since I've started, you know, there's always that conversation, well, what about the Personnel Board? But then is that even in existence now? You know, not, you don't want to be held back. And it does seem like you don't actually have to go just through them, because there's always somebody else who could be in charge of it. We need to make that clear. So what I'm recommending is eliminating the Personnel Board. And, uh, and making it so it's just the Town Administrator. I did make recommendations on some changes. It needs to be updated a little more, so it's just showing Town Administrator. But I think it is possible. I did reach out, um, to regional, uh, I don't know, regional listserv of what other folks have done and had. It is possible. I did ask Town Council. It's also possible to just go town meeting to eliminate the Personnel Board. Um, so it is something that we can definitely do. And I think that it will just make it a lot clearer of who's in charge. I think the, the plan is, is to make it so the Town Administrator can appoint a position like mine to be that one individual to be in charge of managing the system.
So the, um, your page, the item, number four recommendations on page two, your original, as the A, we eliminate the Personnel Board and the Personnel Administrator from the general bylaws and policies. And then we move the authority to the front, from the Personnel Board and the Personnel Administrator to the Town Administrator and their, and/or their appointed official. So that's the essence of what the town meeting warrant would, would propose.
Yes.
And it would be in the form of a new bylaw?
Correct, and updating the policies.
End up dating.
I thought we already did that on the policies.
So the policies still show the Personnel Board.
Cause you didn't have the authority to.
Yeah, because we, we still had a Personnel Board. But the thing is that we made it only advisory to the, uh, administrator there.
This was just eliminated.
Yeah, it's just one.
Should be an.
Have, have we reached out to, uh, members, any of the members or the, you know, SNL Patel?
So not from my understanding, my, the consensus I've received from staff members is that it doesn't exist. Um, and if you have more experience with that, you know, Ryan is still new. Um, I don't think either of us have any.
So you haven't tried to call them.
When was the last time we appointed somebody to the Personnel Board?
That's a good question.
I think, I think if there's anybody actively, we should, we should reach out to them.
Yes.
Yeah, um, one woman contacted Ryan, his name I didn't recognize from the Personnel Board last, I think it was last fall, was wondering what was happening. Um, the, the woman that was the chair has not been responsive to any.
An message.
Yeah, that happened, um.
But then I thought it's enough to go to the chair.
I don't know.
I don't think she tells them. She's busy.
Let me just not carry this for her husband, actually.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I guess one, so one request from the board would be to, uh, specifically identify, look at who's, was, who were the last people that were appointed to the committee? And figure out if there's a way to reach out to each of them.
Sure.
Determine whether they are. Do they think they're still on the committee? And, um, or not even that, I guess, just to let them know we're going to move this change.
Yes, absolutely. So we're, we're.
Professionalizing HR. That's basically what we're doing. We had a Personnel Board when we had no, no HR director in the.
Right.
In the town to do the job. And now we're just professionalizing it.
According to the website, which of course could be completely outdated, but, um, there's, there are two vacant positions and only one person is still active. The other two would have expired last summer if they weren't reappointed. So I will verify, I will reach out to them.
Okay. Or just reach out to the one that's still on there.
After just making sure we didn't appoint anybody else, but I don't.
To Casey Hurley either.
We were going to be evaluating this.
Ben Perry.
Another couple of questions. Um, so one is, one of the, one of the roles of the Personnel Board was to vet things. And, uh, you know, new hires, vet salary increases, um, and things like that. And then come to the Select Board with recommendations or whoever was requesting it, it would come to the Select Board at budget time. That would still exist, right? It would just be you that was doing that. Um, and the Personnel, the Personnel Policy as it is, as edited, would still be in effect.
Correct. So I've already been working on that, as you know, um, such as with the military leave policy. So that will continue to work in that manner. So we could even put that in the bylaw or the policies as well, if, if that's something.
I just think that part of like, just making sure that part of the essence of what the Personnel Board was charged with is in that role that we're creating. Like, I'm assuming it's like part of somebody's job description or something. But, you know, there, there was a function that they were to provide, and we just want to know that that's the function that we're still getting and doing this. But I personally am very supportive of this. I've been, I, I know it was back when I was on the first, the, the planning board. But certainly since I've been on the Board of Selectmen in twenty fourteen, I think going all the way back to twenty thousand eight, when I was on the planning board, there were times, there was a long time when we were trying to implement, we did a wage and classification study.
That was a big one.
And we were trying to implement it. But our, we had two people on the Personnel Board. They were both residents. They were husband and wife, but they didn't live in, live in town, so they couldn't get together. It's no fault of their own. They just weren't here and we weren't able to get anybody else to be a part of it. This has been a problem for over a decade. Um, and I think that this step is going to be very helpful, I think, in us moving forward.
I will say, I think it's becoming kind of a movement statewide, because when I did ask some local, uh, towns on the lister, a lot of people asked me to let them know that my findings. So a lot of towns, I believe, are looking to doing a similar move.
Yeah, Personnel, um, has gotten beyond what a volunteer board can do. You know, there's a lot of issues that they're not equipped, uh, to do and, uh.
All right, so.
Okay.
Yeah, let's make a motion.
Yes.
To, um, accept the proposed bylaw change.
I move to include a warrant article on the May eighth, twenty twenty-three annual town meeting warrant to amend the Town of Carlisle general bylaws and policies to eliminate the Personnel Board and Personnel Administrator and to move the authority from the Personnel Board and Personnel Administrator to the Town Administrator and/or their appointed official. Uh, okay.
You have a second.
I don't like the word official, but that's okay.
Perfect. Second.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Approved unanimously. Thank you for hanging in there, Aubrey, this long. Yeah.